Welcome, everyone. I, Council President Walsh, call the July 16th Special Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order at 6:30 PM. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meeting, so both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. Tonight, Councilmember Ray has an excused absence. There are going to be multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There's a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation and then council question and answer period on either of tonight's agenda items. So we'll start with public comment. Members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. You can do so if you're on the phone by pressing star three. If you're joined on a smartphone or a computer, look for the hand icon, or you can send the host a chat message. If you're in the room tonight and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing that portion of the meeting. And I'm going to wait a moment, just give people the opportunity to raise their hand and ask a clerk if anyone has signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening.
Yes, Council President, we have some members of the public who have indicated a desire to speak.
Great. I've just got a few guidelines to read on that. You're invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Issaquah's programs, projects, services, or events. Comments related to political campaigns are not permitted. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals. While this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed and if you've left your information. When recognized, if you're virtual, you'll unmute your microphone, or if you're in person, step up to the lectern and you'll need to press a little button on there until it turns red. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently. And limit your comments to five minutes. There will be a timer right there. If you're attending virtually and do not respond when your name or last part of your phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You're encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Please note, personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Clerk, can you identify the first person who has signed up to speak?
Yes, Council President, Kelly Richardson would like to speak to the committee.
Excellent. Come on up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, council. My name is Kelly Richardson, and I live at 14910-262nd Avenue Southeast in Issaquah. I am here today wearing two hats. The first is the Commercial Director for Rowley Properties, and the second is as a dedicated citizen to our wonderful community. Additionally, I serve as an Economic Vitality Commissioner for Issaquah. People choose to live in Issaquah because of our exceptional quality of life, our outstanding schools, and the beautiful outdoors that surround us. Similarly, businesses are drawn to Issaquah due to its convenient access, proximity to their homes and team members' neighborhoods, and the presence of synergistic businesses and demographics. One of the most compelling reasons both residents and businesses choose Issaquah is the sense of safety and security our community provides. This safety and security is vital to maintaining the high quality of life that we all cherish. The presence of a safe and secure environment ensures that businesses can thrive, employees feel comfortable, and families can enjoy the peace of mind that comes with living in our secure community. The Issaquah Police Department plays a crucial role in upholding this safety and security. Our community has grown, and unfortunately, organized crime came to Issaquah during COVID. Chief Schwan and her team have done a fantastic job reducing crime. However, the crime did grow beyond the facilities and resources that were available. Organized crime is still here due to Issaquah's accessibility. For example, a national retail store in the Issaquah Highlands listed Issaquah as their number 10 in the top 10 of their stores in the nation for crime at the end of 2023, and they have many, many, many stores. As another example, a local business experienced a break-in at their retail store. The perpetrators had an automatic weapon. The police arrived, but the perpetrators could not be found immediately, yet they were still in the area that was known. The police and retailer had to wait for the King County Sheriff to arrive with their K-9 unit. And eventually, the perpetrators were found hiding in the rafters. This delay highlights the need for more resources locally. Issaquah should have the resources our community needs to address crime effectively. Supporting and appreciating the Issaquah Police Department's dedication and hard work ensures that our community remains a place where people feel safe to live, work, and play. Their presence is a cornerstone of the quality of life in Issaquah, fostering a sense of trust and stability among residents and businesses alike. Also, Issaquah must have a police station facility that is on par with other jurisdictions. We must have the capacity to grow our force and resources. A crowded facility is not efficient for the police or city staff. I am here to express my full support for the Issaquah Police Department and to advocate for expanding their facilities. Their efforts are instrumental in maintaining the safety and security that are so vital to our community's well-being. I urge the council to continue your support of the police department, ensuring they have the resources and backing they need to perform their duties effectively. Thank you for your time and consideration. I know together we'll ensure that Issaquah remains a safe, secure, and thriving community for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else signed up or indicating a desire to speak?
No, Council President, we do not.
Okay. We have a lot of lovely people in the audience from our task force for the strategic plan, and we are happy to have them, and we will hear from them later. In general, we always want to say, we would love to hear from you. You can always email citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov, and we appreciate hearing from you in person or via email. So looking at the agenda, we have two agenda items on our list tonight. We've got COM 0054, the Strategic Plan Update Task Force, and then following that, we've got COM 0055, Facilities and Revenue Options. So starting with the first, we've got Dale Markey Crimp, Assistant to the City Administrator, with presentation and all of our lovely task force members.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Dale Markey Crimp. I am the Assistant to the City Administrator and also the staff liaison to the Mayor's Strategic Plan Update Task Force. A long, a long name. And I am thrilled to be the warm-up to what will be an incredible presentation tonight from our task force members. Before I turn it over to them, though, I will walk through purpose and some background for the group. So the purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide a report on the recommendations from the mayoral task force on updates to the Our Issaquah Strategic Plan. Specifically tonight, we're looking for direction from city council on two, in two ways. One, feedback on the recommended updates to the objectives made by the task force; and second, a recommendation about the proposed path forward in the plan update. As is useful, I'm also going to provide some background on the plan and the process by which this group came to be in front of you this evening. The Our Issaquah Strategic Plan was adopted in 2019 following an 18-month process. This process was grounded in and led by community sentiment, input, and feedback through surveys, listening sessions, and other public meetings. From this process emerged the Our Issaquah Strategic Plan with its six goal areas: mobility, infrastructure, growth and development, environmental stewardship, city leadership and services, and social and economic vitality. I will be honest, after the past six months, I feel like I can close my eyes and I see the wheel in my eyelids. That is a sign of a great strategic plan. Each goal area had one to five objectives, and aligned to each of those goal areas a number of potential actions that the city could take towards the goals articulated in the plan. While there has often been, both in this room and outside of it, discussion about whether the document is operational or truly more aspirational, it has been a north star for the administration and the city council since its adoption, and it represents the vision for our community from our community. At the time of the plan's adoption, there was always a plan to revisit the plan five years later, because in our infinite wisdom, we anticipated that a lot would change from 2019 until 2024. Little did we know exactly how much the world might change shortly after the plan's adoption. And while it's difficult to delineate what changes in the way that we live and the way that we gather and the goals that we have are impacted purely by the pandemic and which are impacted by other elements and changes in our community, suffice to say, much has changed. And so five years on, it was time to revisit the strategic plan. Given the essential, I would say both the primary and the essential role that Issaquah community members played in the development of the original strategic plan, it was important to Mayor Polly that any update to the plan also begin with community perspective and input. You can see on the screen some of the images from the original plan and some of the images from the collaboration of our task force over the course of the first half of this year. So a task force was assembled by Mayor Polly to ensure representation from various perspectives across the city, representing the diversity of opinion and background that makes Issaquah the unique community that it is. In addition to two members of city council and an alternate member of city council, there were 11 other regular, there were 11 regular members total and four alternates. You can see their names listed here, and we have nine of them here in attendance tonight, and you'll get to hear a bit more from them this evening. You'll also notice that there's representation from five city boards and commissions in this very excellent group of community leaders. Before I pass it over to the main event, our folks that I'm most excited, and I'm sure you're most excited to hear from this evening, I'd like to share a little bit about the scope of the proposed update. The focus of this update is not the overarching vision or mission outlined in the strategic plan, nor is it a change to the plan's six goal areas. The administration is confident that these remain guiding, a guiding light in our plan. The focus of this update is on the objectives and actions within each goal area. The task force was asked to consider whether the objectives of the original plan remained relevant and were, from their perspective as members of the Issaquah community, moving the needle towards the overarching vision articulated in each goal area. In other words, are we prioritizing and doing the right stuff and taking the right actions to get us closer to the future we've envisioned for the city that we live in? An embedded goal of this process was also to scope the actions and, where possible, the objectives into a five-year time horizon, as well as to, as to make the objectives a bit more measurable, so we could actually know over the course of the next five years if we're making progress towards what we hope to achieve at the end of that five years. And the hope is that in 2030, when we look at this plan again, all of the out, the actions outlined in this plan will have been accomplished, and along the way, the administration will have been able to let you and the community know if we're headed in the right direction. The task force met, as you can see on this screen, six times over the course of the winter and spring and summer. Many seasons were experienced in Tibbetts. We met first on February 29th to ground in the original plan, provide feedback on elements of the background and opportunities that we feel that the task force felt needed an update. In the second meeting, they met with city staff members to learn more about the city's functional plans and understand the work that feeds into and feeds out of the strategic plan. The third meeting, the task force began brainstorming changes to the objectives in each goal area. At the fourth meeting, they did the same for actions within each goal area. At the fifth meeting, they provided feedback to each other on their proposed draft recommendations for both objectives and actions. At the sixth meeting, we brought those city staff members back, and they provided additional support as the task force sought to smooth their recommendations, ensuring that their recommendations are clear and feasible. So without further ado, to share the recommended updates from the task force, I'm going to turn it over to our task force chair and vice chair, Priti Modi Pan and Chris Richly.
Evening, council members and fellow task force members and members of the public. My name is Chris Richly. I'm the chair of the, or vice chair of the task force, as long with the, being the chair of the Economic Vitality Commission for the city, as well as a 10-year resident of Issaquah. Tonight, as you'll see, our original plan has 16 objectives across six goal areas. Our proposed updates actually keep these six goal areas, however, reworks the updates of almost all the objectives, along with adding four new objectives in infrastructure, city leadership and services, and mobility. During this presentation, our proposed updates, you will be hearing from our fellow task members who are present. And however, before presenting, our chair will be highlighting some trends across the recommended task force believes are worth introducing separate from the updates individual goals. That'll turn it over to our chair, Priti.
Thank you, Chris and Dale. I'm Priti Modi Pan. I'm the chair of the Equity Board, as well as have the honor of serving as the chair of the Strategic Plan Update Task Force, appointed by the mayor. I have been also a resident of Issaquah for about 12 years. I use she/her pronouns. And so as we looked across the six goal areas of the strategic plan, we noted six headlines or themes to describe the changes we're recommending in this updated plan, and those themes include, so the first one is emergency preparedness, community safety, and resilience. Those items were a trend across all group conversations. Proposed revisions to objectives in mobility, environmental stewardship, and city leadership and services reflect this, the task force's perspective that this needs to be a city priority over the next five years and beyond. The second theme was continued investment in climate action and sustainability. It's needed to, we need this to continue to make progress in our community's commitment to environmental stewardship and respond to the increased threats caused by climate change. Our third theme was housing affordability and livability. This remains a priority and should be a core work stream. We've evolved from simply thinking about growth and development to considering how growth and development intersects with social and economic vitality. How can Issaquah be a community that not only says it's welcoming to all types of people, but also has the housing options for individuals in different socioeconomic situations? And that's a good segue into our fourth theme, which is operationalizing our equity commitments. As you all may recall, equity was one of the guiding principles feeding into the strategic plan development. And so we have incorporated equity into the language of objectives and also in what the city commits to doing and how it does this work. It's a change that the task force would like to see, and as I said, it's a guiding principle, and it, it's one of the few guiding principles that lacks a functional plan that operationalizes it for the city. Let's see, and the last theme is Issaquah as a partner and a catalyst for regional change. The task force members recognized that so much of what we hope for in our community, the future vision and the near-term actions hinges on others, so other jurisdictions, agencies, and partners. A commitment to deepening partnerships where possible and becoming a regional leader in spaces where partners do not yet exist is a key trend across our recommendations. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jason and TJ to share their recommended updates to our first goal area, which is infrastructure.
Albert, Estelo.
Yes.
So thank you all for having us this evening. As well, I want to say thank you to our chairs, Chris Richly and Priti Modi Pan, for a fantastic job. Also, I'd be remiss not to say a big thank you to our staff liaison, Dale Markey Crimp. We really could not have asked for a better team to work with, and we've enjoyed working with all of you on this project. My name is Jason Voice, and I'd now like to introduce you to my better half this evening.
Yeah, well, thank you, Jason, and good evening, council. My name is TJ Genthner, long-term resident of Issaquah, live in the Squawk Mountain neighborhood, and I've had the pleasure of serving on several boards over the years, the Planning Committee, the Development Commission, and I think it was the Rivers and Streams Commission, which I don't think exists anymore. I think it got rolled into something else. And I would just like to acknowledge the wisdom of Dale to put the most exciting element of the plan first, and that's infrastructure. Yeah, that's the way to hook somebody with infrastructure. Now, I know things like our lovely parks, our outdoor spaces, our mobility issues, our arts and culture elements are all really important, but I would just like to say that when the water doesn't work, or we're flooding, infrastructure gets mighty exciting. So we had a lot of great conversations with staff, and we like to think that every week is Infrastructure Week in Issaquah.
The original 2019 strategic plan had only one objective within the infrastructure goal area. This objective focused on having infrastructure plans in place.
We're recommending with this update that, to add an objective and a second objective around infrastructure resilience and beef up the wording on one of the existing goals or objectives. So the two proposed objectives are as follows: plans and resources are up to date, forward-looking, and that's the change that we made, is added forward-looking, and are in place to operate, maintain, and replace infrastructure throughout its lifecycle. And if you just go around Issaquah right now, you, you see those investments being made, and we think that's very important to take care of that, that structure that we have in place. The second objective that we added, and this is keeping in mind what our vice chair had just brought up, is proactively develop, manage, and improve city-owned infrastructure to avoid long-term disruption in service and prepare for climate change-related weather events. And as we all know, or as we're experiencing, experiencing with very hot summers, and some of the issues that we're having is that climate change is here, it's impacting our infrastructure and our quality of life, and it's very important to stay on top of the investments to keep that fresh and healthy. So those are the couple of items, because we feel like it's important that, that good, solid infrastructure is the base for emergency services, safety, and environment, and it's, it's the foundation that we can build upon to prepare for what's coming in the future. So now on to Jason, who will talk a little bit more about the actions.
TJ? In some of these proposed actions that we feel align to these objectives and represent a departure from the previous plan are: develop and implement an organization-wide asset management policy and financial plan to ensure sound stewardship of city assets; plan for and budget operations and maintenance costs with all new capital operated by the city; effectively communicate emergency weather conditions with the community; and partner with local and regional utilities to coordinate communication; and when building, updating, and retrofitting facilities, minimize the carbon impact. From our consultation with staff and our review of functional plans, we believe these actions are feasible and align to the recommended objectives. I believe that's it, so we will pass it off to Jamie.
Before you do that, I just want to check in with Dale. Do you think it's appropriate to ask questions of each of the individual areas, or is it, should we save questions and then ask them to you at the end? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Write them all down.
Yeah, any difficult questions can be addressed to Jason.
Oh, fantastic. Yes.
Didn't realize how funny TJ was.
I'm Jamie Finch. I'm a member of the Environmental Board, and I've been in Issaquah about the same length of time as the strategic plan, so about five years. Kelly was also a member of my group, but she'll be covering. We're kind of doing things a bit different than TJ and Jason, splitting up our topic areas completely, so. So the original strategic plan had four objectives within growth and development, and we haven't proposed any really major changes. We're kind of reworking what was there. So those, summarizing those, the focus on neighborhood feeling, forward-looking land use policies, sustainable infrastructure, and livability and connection. And one thing I just want to note is our group, as you might expect with growth and development, we talked a lot about housing affordability and livability in the city, and that ultimately ended up in social, social and economic vitality. But we spent almost as much time as, on that topic as we did on some of the other topics, and I think the, the themes, I think, are resonating in some of those other areas, but really a focus on increasing affordable housing units and incorporating increased density, which you'll see in our, in one of our actions into our existing neighborhoods. So that was a major topic of discussion, as, as I think anyone might expect, so. I won't read all of the objective language for you guys. I'll let you guys do that. But I'll talk a little bit about kind of the changes and what we decided to do with, with the four objectives that were there. So the first objectives add some notes about incorporating additional housing and services throughout the city. So this is kind of based on the comment that I made a second ago about how do we make sure that we are incorporating that in the right way? One of the words that was in the previous objectives that I think, we didn't come up with the right language, but based on a lot of feedback from the group, needed to probably not make it into the final version was the word "character" and how that is kind of loaded language. And so we didn't get to the point that we were wordsmithing, and, but that was something that, finding the right way to describe maintaining the integrity of neighborhoods, but also ensuring that we were using language that was kind of updated and in line with, with our current thinking is, is something that whoever is finally writing this will have the fun task of doing that. So the second one really didn't change very much, but just emphasizing land use plans and, and we adopt, since we've done the update, we've adopted Title 18, so just ensuring that we're adding regular updates for that. The third objective did not change from the previous iteration. And then the fourth focused on developing livable communities and explicitly calls out ecosystem health and climate actions as priorities for growth. We think those are just some new elements that are, a lot of what we think about as livability within Issaquah has, has remained the same, but those are some unique elements that we thought, especially with some of the strains that, that climate change will put on those things, that kind of necessitated some additional mention. So I can go to the next slide now. These were just a few of the actions that we, we decided to highlight. So like I mentioned, Title 18 has been adopted since, or the updates to Title 18 have been adopted since the previous update, and so one important action that we focused on was ensuring that we complete all actions on the Title 18 future updates. all actions on the Title 18 future updates list. Um, this second, uh, action that we decided to focus on was proactively identify how to incorporate diversity of housing into our neighborhoods to support residents at all stages of their lives. I think there's two things going on there. This is, this is, uh, discussing how, uh, we incorporate, uh, different styles of housing, missing middle housing, um, and also ensuring that that, uh, residents have options to to age and place or, um, uh, basically have options for as they, uh, reach other stages of life. So, um, this was something that, uh, really felt was an important, um, stage or important, uh, topic to highlight and I'm sure probably economic and social vitality will will hit on this as well. And then, uh, one final action was just identifying and addressing opportunities to improve processes for developing within the city. So how can we reduce times for permits? How can we ensure that anything that's within the direct control of the city to reduce development costs can be done? So, um, so from our consultation with staff and review of the functional plans, we believe these are generally feasible and aligned. As I said, I think we don't expect these to be, and they won't be, the final, the final versions, but, uh, hopefully are headed in the right direction. So, appreciate, thank you, thank you to Dale and and thank you to, um, all the other staff members that supported us as well as task members, task force members. So, thank you.
My name is Victor Bello. I'm a resident of Issaquah for six and a half years or so and recently appointed to the Sister Cities Commission. Um, I'm here to walk you through the social and economic vitality goal area. In, um, the original 2019 strategic plan, we had three objectives within, um, this goal area. We're recommending retaining all three objectives in their current form and a continuous focus on business recruitment and retention, housing affordability and human services for all. The three objectives, uh, shown as follows, were covered, um, or, for the first objective, we, the, the task force discussed our strategies to help new and existing businesses expand in Issaquah, helping them provide job opportunities with wages high enough for workers to also live in the city. Um, we felt that it was important for us to provide the, um, opportunities for people to reside in the city and work here, um, as well. Um, with our second, um, objective, the task force discussed that the city should, how the city should best address the affordable housing to ensure that it covers and addresses the full, um, income spectrum so that workers get to, again, live in the city as they work. This basically covers the second part of the live and work in Issaquah. For the third objective, um, the, um, I lost my ways, sorry about that. So for the third object, the, um, it directs the administration, or it directs the city to, um, find and, uh, to help the residents find and engage the services that are only provided by the city, but also by organizations that work within the city and giving them the opportunity to, um, engage and to use those services to help them thrive, um, in the community. Um, to walk you, uh, through the actions, I'll, I'll, Chris.
Hello again. Chris Richly, Economic Vitality Chair and Vice Chair of the Task Force. Uh, as you see, I mean, you're hearing a common theme over social and economic vitality, which is work, live and be able to, you know, be able to stay in Issaquah, right? Keep the money in Issaquah. So during deliberations as a task force and conversation with staff, our biggest recommendation updates come in the actions that align to these objectives, specifically ensuring that the actions align with the functional plans, namely the newly adopted Economic Development Action Plan, the Human Services Strategic Plan and the ongoing Housing Continuum Work Plan. Uh, as you see on the screen, there are some recommended, uh, proposed items, increasing recruitment of the outreach of the diverse business owners and entrepreneurs, exploring and investing in housing in individuals and families with greater needs, uh, zero to thirty percent AMI, continue to implement the Service, Human Services Strategic Plan reporting on the progress towards key goals and benchmarks. The majority of our group felt a few notable actions to be added to the update supports the retention and recruiting of diverse businesses in Issaquah, as well as addresses the needs to explore and invest in affordable housing. It also continues to implement trackable goals and benchmarks. These actions will support an evolved city to one where one can work, live and do business in Issaquah. I am too, have the privilege of working and living in Issaquah, so I do know what that's felt like, so these actions do support that. Thank you. And with that, I'll turn it over to, oh, Katie.
Mobility. Hello, my name is Katie Hurt and I originally moved to Issaquah in 1994 and then went away for college, law school and to get married and decided to come back here to start and raise my family in 2017. Uh, so myself as well as Julian are, uh, the representatives to discuss mobility and a special thanks to Councilmember Hunt who also, uh, participated and contributed to these as well. Um, and I am going to be going over the objectives and then Julian will be going over the actions. So, uh, the original strategic plan in 2019 had three objectives in the mobility goal area. We are recommending, uh, retaining and reworking all three objectives and adding a fourth objective that's, uh, focused on the safety of the mobility system. These updated objectives call for the city to focus on multimodal improvements, near-term connections and efficiencies, light rail area vision and community engagement, and safety systems approach to mobility, including approaches such as Vision Zero. The four updated objectives are prioritize the movement of people and goods through improvements to the multimodal, multimodal, ugh, transportation network, supporting goals of sustainability and livability. Near-term connections, uh, number two, near-term connections and efficiency in the mobility system are completed. Number three, the city has realized, it's realized a safe systems approach such as Vision Zero. And number four, establish a vision for Issaquah's future Sound Transit Light Rail Station and surrounding environs that prioritize community needs and inputs, including the infrastructure around, that might be needed around such a large station coming here, um, so that they don't make a decision about us without us. The first objective is reworking, uh, is a reworking of the original first objective around the establishment of a planned transportation system. We feel that at this point, the most effective way to reduce congestion is to support the non-single-vehicle travel. To do that, there needs to be a focus on multimodal transportation. The second objective remains the same as 2019. This ongoing work is necessary to ensure the connectivity of the system, which we received feedback from members of staff and, uh, community members on. The third is the new objective that is focused on safe systems. We believe that one of the greatest challenges to multimodal transit within Issaquah, uh, simply having the pathways and hardware, but the safety of, but also the safety of anyone walking, riding and rolling through Issaquah to have space to share the road effectively. The final objective is an update from 2019 objective that incorporates the area around the envisioned light rail station into the planning process for the upcoming five years and emphasizes the importance of ongoing community engagement even if there are no significant updates. An update of no update is still an update. Keeping the community engaged and informed is key to keeping the focus on this long-term goal. And now I will hand it over to Julian to introduce himself and talk about the actions.
Great, thank you. I'm Julian, I'm now the Chair of the Transportation Advisory Board, um, and I've been on the board since 2021. And so, falling into some of the other areas, um, within these goals, um, you know, for the movement aspect, we really want to make sure that, um, in terms of actions that we're tracking the implementation of the Mobility Master Plan. And so, um, you know, on tap, I I don't recall that we've received an annual mobility report card, um, that assesses very specifically our progress on those, uh, metrics. And so, um, another aspect of that, it's not addressed here, but it's also addressed in the, um, attachment that you received. Level of service, um, should be continually reassessed, uh, and making sure that it's in line with the Mobility Master Plan. We need to make sure, uh, going on to the safe systems approach, uh, making sure that we have a comprehensive safety action plan. A lot of our plans related to safety are, uh, go into this, um, you know, address one aspect, so we have like a neighborhood traffic safety, we have a traffic calming, but having a comprehensive one would be really useful. Um, we want to make sure that we're actually achieving Vision Zero and/or another safe systems approach, um, and making sure that we're addressing our engineering standards to reflect best practices, um, in that lens. And another one for that is like fostering collective advocacy to support non-drive-alone, um, means of travel. And so, um, and then with, uh, for the light rail, addressing light rail, we want to make sure that the, how we're conducting and embedding a comprehensive analysis of all potential station locations with the vision. This is a really strong reworking of what was there previously and so, I'm much more specific on that. And it's also making sure that our collaboration is a very active collaboration with Sound Transit, um, in terms of integrating, um, integrating city plans and land use and all of that issues. Um, and we want to make sure that we're, um, continuing and increasing engagement with Sound Transit, Washington and the community, namely, um, calling out the one-year, uh, once-per-year town hall format that we'd like, um, to have happen, uh, leading up to the planning process. Um, and so that's basically everything and also wanted to call out that, um, that we are really making sure that we're on, staying on the edge, leading edge of, uh, technological improvements in transportation and so that's electrical vehicle, charging stations and, uh, metro flex and other similar micro-transit. And so, yeah, thank you. We'll pass it, we'll pass it off to environmental.
My name's Kelly Jing and I am, I've lived in Issaquah for the last four years. Um, I'm not on any city commissions, but I am the president of the Issaquah Alps Trails Club, so we are, you know, listed on here, number two. Community members as active partners, yeah. Um, and so I think I can speak for myself and probably a lot of you when I say that the reason why I chose to live here in Issaquah is because of the natural environment, access to, you know, world-class trails for running, mountain biking, hiking, walking around. And I think, um, that's kind of the foundation for what makes our city special. Um, and so, um, environmental stewardship has been an important, um, value for our community, uh, since the 2019 strategic plan and obviously long before that. Um, so in terms of the objectives for, um, 2024, um, we are essentially reworking the objectives that were present in the previous version of the plan, but placing a much bigger focus on climate action. One thing to note, um, which I just realized recently is that this, what falls under the umbrella of environmental stewardship is essentially what's going to be, you know, in the work plans for the parks and, um, sustainability departments. And so there's a lot of things related to climate change that we talked about here, like climate resilience, you know, concerns about, um, insurance premiums for places that are on the wildland urban interface. Those don't neatly fall under the, um, umbrella of those departments and so they weren't included in our final plan here. Um, great, so the updated objectives, so, um, I'll just talk through some of the major changes here. Um, so number one, we added climate action as something that Issaquah is recognized as a regional leader for. Um, the second objective, we kept the same. Um, and then the third one, um, there was a focus on conservation and land acquisition in the previous plan, but that one previously focused more on, you know, benefits to community members, whereas now it's more focused on habitat and, um, considering the potential impacts of climate change. Um, and I think, you know, this is important, especially considering that, um, the, you know, land acquisitions now, we're considering like, what's the carbon sequestration value of the forests? And that's something that is really, you know, needs to be at the forefront when we're considering new conservation decisions. Um, great, so, um, here are the proposed actions and, uh, I guess, updates to the proposed actions. So this one here, it's kind of, you know, figuring out where the city actually has leverage to make an impact, right? You know, City of Issaquah does not have the funding to install heat pumps in everyone's homes, but what they can do is promote city-led projects to help inspire community action. For example, you know, recently, um, there is the Imagine Housing Heat Pump Project where actually Jay Inslee showed up and posted about it on his Instagram, prime example of that, which was awesome. Um, and then also, you know, there's all these functional plans like the Issaquah Climate Action Plan and the Parks Plan, which we're working on providing public comment on now, um, which are really, you know, the meat and potatoes or, uh, climate-friendly vegetarian version of that, um, to, um, ensure that, you know, we're actually taking the actions to get things done. Um, and then, um, the last item here is, you know, about the tree canopy and improving ecosystem health on both, uh, public and private lands, kind of calling out, you know, the Climate Action Plan, Park System Plan and Urban Forest Management Plan and figuring out, you know, what are things we can do to encourage landowners to increase tree canopy on their private properties, um, and, you know, focus on where the, um, city can really make an impact. So, um, yeah, and I think we save the best for last, which is, City Leadership and Services.
Hello, I'm Victor, we met. Um, I'm here to cover the last one, uh, but not least of, uh, the goal areas with City Leadership and Services. Um, the original 2019 strategic plan had two objectives, uh, within this, uh, goal area. In 2021, something happened, I forget, and we added a third objective related to public safety. Um, however, that objective did not have any actions, um, associated with it. We are now recommending retaining and reworking all the three other obje, all the three of these objectives, sorry. And then, um, those three objectives charge the city to focus on fostering inclusive civic engagement, providing efficient, effective and equitable services and providing comprehensive public safety. The fourth new objective is related to the city's emergency preparedness response, uh, preparedness and response. Now, as proposed updated objectives, uh, specifically, we're recommending the following, um, in the City Leadership and Services goal. Um, in the first one, we seek to drive a community engagement across our diverse community. While this objective aligns with the 2019 goal of very varied civic engagement, the updated focus explicitly targets engagement across demographic groups. As our city becomes more ethnically, linguistically and racially diverse, our efforts must strive to incorporate the perspective of, the perspective of our entire community as well. On the second objective, mirror, which mirrors the 2019 plan by emphasizing efficiency and effectiveness in services, it now also includes equity as a third value. This addition highlights the importance of addressing our city's growing diversity in a key step in, and is a key step in operationalizing equity within the strategic plan. The third objective around public safety remains the same, but it's crucial to implement measures and allocate resources with consideration of our community's diversity. Public safety is not one size fits all and the city needs to recognize and address this by adopting tailored approaches that effectively support all community members, um, that, um, live in Issaquah. The last objective, uh, the fourth and newest objective focuses on emergency preparedness, response and management. The need to incorporate this into the plan was evidently, evident early in our discussions as a task force. While elements of emergency preparedness and resilience are woven throughout other goal areas, we believe it belongs with City Leadership and Services. leadership and services. Increasingly dry summers and wet winters highlight the necessity for the city to plan for future emergencies. The city's commitment to understanding local risks, preparing for complex challenges, and ensuring community resilience is critical to safeguarding residents before, during, and after emergencies. By taking proactive measures, educating the community, and continuously improving strategies, the city aims to create a resilient and well-prepared community. That said, I now hand it off to our task force chair to close out with the proposed actions.
Yes. And so I am wrapping up the goal area discussion and sharing out some of the new proposed actions in city leadership and services. And if you reflect on the objectives that Victor just shared, the first two are really about how the city does its work. And so we are hopeful that the how objectives get passed into how the city does its work throughout the goal areas. And then the last two objectives are about some other functional areas that the city manages. So the, so the first two new objectives that I'm gonna share here, the first, the first two bullet points are really about how we are imagining operationalizing equity, which was one of the plan's guiding principles. And so the first action is cultural and community liaisons to engage and reach Issaquah's diverse communities. When we look in spaces where there's public comment and other, you know, town halls and other forums, the folks who engage in those meetings are typically the folks who have historically engaged in those meetings and in public comment. And so we're proposing a way to, it's aligned with the community engagement toolkit that was developed by the city, but really putting that into practice and meeting people where they're at and going out to communities and not asking everyone to come to city spaces. So that's really the, the spirit of the first action. The second action is to explore opportunities to shift, to shift to remote and virtual service delivery. It's been something, I feel for a while that this has been a slow shift to make, but with the pandemic, we moved there and we moved there really fast. And I think there's a lot of benefit in terms of access for community members who may not, may not have had access for ability or disability or language. And so having multiple modes to provide city services is just a universal goal that everyone can benefit from. And then the third new action we're proposing, there's, there's a lot of other ones, so these are just some of the ones we're highlighting. But this falls into that public, public and community safety objective area. And it's really about expanding funding and support for community support in similar diversion programs. This will benefit those who have been impacted by the criminal legal system and help put folks on a pathway out of a lifetime of being in the system. So it's been something we propose, the city also continues to expand. And then the fourth action listed here is one related to that new objective around emergency preparedness, resilience. And so it's really preparing staff for emergency response and recovery through regular staff trainings. So we have a whole host of staff who are ready to respond as emergencies arise. And before I pass it back over to Dale to share some proposed next steps, I did also want to echo my deep appreciation and gratitude to my fellow task force members, including some who are on the council, as well as the city staff who supported this work and were so willing to take their extra time in the evenings, and especially Dale Markey-Crimp, who was impeccably prepared and really coached us through a lot of this difficult thinking. And with that, back to you, Dale.
Hello, City Council. The boring one is back. Dale Markey-Crimp, Assistant to the City Administrator. So what comes next after all of that incredible information? I have just a short bit of additional follow-on. So the administration is recommending a proposed path, as was, as was alluded to by more than one presenter. This was just the first phase of this update work. And so the administration is proposing actions through the third and the fourth quarter of this year. Specifically, the first action is a administration and city staff review. While staff have had the opportunity to provide feedback on the draft recommendations, to support the task members as they finalize their recommendations, that was really the focus of their work at the time. It was really supporting the task force and getting their recommendations finalized, not necessarily putting on that lens of feasibility, alignment to city plans. And what I would even say, you saw some generalized recommendations such as continue to implement the Human Services Strategic Plan. A next step would be to get more specific about exactly what actions within the Human Services Strategic Plan or the Urban Forest, Urban Forest Management Plan, would we want to commit to completing in the next five years. So that would be the first step here coming up in July and August. Then, at the, towards the tail end of Q3, and somewhat similar to the CIP process, this most recent one where boards and commission members were invited to come together to provide input and feedback, we'd like to invite board and commission members to come together to provide additional input and feedback after this, this staff draft emerges towards the middle of Q3. From there, we'd like to seek additional community input, likely through some open houses, both in-person and hybrid. I think, as you heard just now, the importance of accessibility to give feedback. So not necessarily requiring people to come in person, but providing a way for people to engage if they can't necessarily leave their homes. And then a planned return to city council in Q4 with a finalized draft plan. So the, the recommendation from the administration is that the city council agree to this proposed path for the strategic plan update, staff review and input, board and commission review and input, some further community feedback, and then a return to council with a final updated plan in Q4. As a reminder, the direction needed for this evening, first and foremost, feedback on these incredible recommendations you just heard from our task force and any input or recommendation about the proposed path to move forward with the update. And that is where I'll leave it.
Excellent. So we start with questions, and then we'll get any public comments and a whole lot of feedback, starting with Deputy Council President Michelle, and we'll go.
Thank you so much. This was a great presentation, and thanks to everybody for all the hard work. And you've produced an outstanding document. So I only, I had one question, and I too was among the group that was thrilled to see that infrastructure was the first thing on the list. So, so the two potential actions, develop and implement an organization-wide asset management policy and financial plan, hallelujah, that's fantastic. And the second one, I needed a little bit more explanation, plan for and budget operations and maintenance costs with all new capital operated by the city. Could you clarify that a little bit for me? In my mind, I'm reading that whenever we embark on developing new capital, that we would also develop a long-range budget and maintenance plan to go with that proposal? Is that, is that basically what that, that action is saying? I'm seeing naughty hits, so.
You know, the thing about Dale that's amazing, I'm gonna go a little off-topic here, is that people, you know, my wife would say, oh, did you get to chat with Tola or anybody else? And we'd have our meetings. She kept us so busy that there was no chance to socialize, get to know your fellow council group, task force members, because we were on task and very busy. But the idea there, and again, we're talking to city staff, and the idea about, just like if you buy a car, buy a house, you know, it's one thing to have the sunk cost of saying, oh, I just bought something. Wow, that's exciting. But then you have to think the whole cost of taking care of it, updating it, maintaining it, making sure that it gets refreshed and is still operating the way it was when you had originally envisioned buying that, putting that new road in, for instance, that new street, using a new surface that you haven't used before, so on and so forth. So that was the thought process behind that statement.
Yeah, really, really excellent. I love that. I'm wondering for people who are not familiar with financial concepts or infrastructure, it might maybe a little bit of clarifying language on that particular one, but, and that's the only question I have. I mean, really, this is a well-written, very, very clear and excellent document. I have a lot of comments, but my question was that one. Thank you.
Councilmember Hall, followed by Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. Ditto. Remarkable work, everyone. Thank you so much. I have one question on the public safety section and two on growth and development. So, and the first one is just clarifying. So for public safety, in the marked-up version and kind of the proposed final version, I'm seeing different objectives for the public safety part. So the city provides efficient, effective, and equitable services to the community, period, in the final one. But then in the marked-up one, it, it goes on and says, and ensures the resilience of his residents before, during, and following an emergency. Wait, no wrong one?
Something tells me that was a Microsoft Word moment.
No, that is user error, reading the wrong objective. So forget that.
Oh, okay. I was gonna, I was gonna blame Microsoft.
Forget that one. All of you forget I said anything about that. Okay, moving on to growth and development then. In this section, I just noticed that it's, there seemed to be some that said identify barriers, identify how-to, and others that were identify and address, and identify and address. And I was wondering if that was intentional, if there's a conversation about, well, we want to just kind of identify what barriers exist. But in these goals, we feel like there may be more doable, so we identify and address. Was that intentional? Was there a conversation around?
I'm gonna invite Jamie to come back up.
Thank you for the question. I think the short answer is, as I alluded to, the level of wordsmithing we got to on this is very low. So I wouldn't read too much into what we did, like what, what you're referring to there. Because, yeah, we, we were mostly focused on thematic elements rather than language.
Good. Yeah, that might be an opportunity during staff review. The other growth and development section or thing that I was interested in was there's a goal around monitoring growth targets. And I was wondering, and maybe this is a question for you, Dale, anyone who has thoughts too would be good, if there is value in having policy around how we set those goals too. Because I know in a large part, we're very involved in where that number actually ends up. And so do we want to have more of an active role in terms of defining the policy around how we end up with the number before then monitoring our progress? Any thoughts?
That's a great question. I've made a note of it. I don't know if anyone else here has a thought.
I can speak to that since I was in that section. This is a five-year plan. And so we won't be influencing our next set of growth targets until after that five-year period. And so while that was something in the previous plan, we struck that and instead replaced it with the idea of continue to monitor and address our progress toward that.
Thank you, Council President.
Councilmember Hunt.
Great. Thank you. Great work, and thank you for the presentations. I had two questions. The first one was on city leadership and services. It was mentioned that cultural and community liaisons would be an important part of making sure that we have diverse representation and decision-making. It was also referenced that that has been a part of our toolkit for, for a while. And so I wondered if in your discussions, you had thoughts or recommendations for, for us to actually implement that, because it has been part of our plan. But I, I agree that it's important to actually enact that over the next years as we try to enact our strategic plan.
Yeah, thanks for that question. I know, so I, I know about the community engagement toolkit from past presentations and discussion, you know, with the Equity Board. And so I know it's, I see almost like two paths around community engagement. So there is engagement that's often, it will, it is or should be a critical part of a planning process, and then ongoing feedback. And so I think as part of a planning process, there might be a broader group of staff engaging in the community engagement process. And so I feel like the toolkit in those contexts, the toolkit could be invaluable to support staff who may not be, may not have as much expertise in community engagement. But I think the liaisons would be more of a full-time role to build relationships with specific communities, you know, based on populations and demographics of priority, and can help enable, enhance community engagement to get to that higher level of participation for like the comprehensive planning and things like.
Right. I remember this conversation pretty vividly, because we discussed that we often ask, the city often asks the community to come and engage in our setting, in this setting, and the commissions come, give us comments. But there's no proactive reach-out the other way around. A liaison would be, you know, instructed or going out to the different communities that have sometimes built their own, you know, programs in, in the Hispanic community or the Salatanian community. They build their own programs and they keep to themselves. How about the city reaches and says like, hey, we know you exist, we love what you're doing, we want to be a part of it, hey, and also come and join us and build the relationship in a two-way street, and not just waiting for them to come and engage us. That was the idea behind that.
Thank you. Oh, you have one more before going to Councilmember Joe. Go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you for those answers. That really helps. My, my second question was on the environment section. It was mentioned that insurance premiums for the wildland-urban interface didn't really fall into a section. And I wondered if you could talk a little bit more about that conversation and sort of your thoughts on, I, I do think that that is going to be a, something we have to address in a strategic way over the next five years. And we're, we're working on emergency planning and things like that. And so I wondered if you could expand on that conversation and, and how we might address it, given that it does impact multiple parts of our plan here.
Yeah. So I think this kind of came up because one of the task force members actually, you know, lives on Squawk Mountain in an area where, you know, some of his neighbors are seeing those impacts to their insurance premiums. I think, I mean, my opinion, which maybe, you know, is not necessarily the opinion of everyone else, I think that would probably fall more under the kind of like city leadership and services aspect or infrastructure, something like that, you know, coming up with like, hey, here's like best practices for, you know, creating a defensible zone around your property. Like, you know, if you go to California, especially in Tahoe, there's like signs everywhere, like, oh, you know, do these things. And I think that might be where it falls under. It's more like infrastructure rather than like sustainability per se. But curious if you have any other thoughts?
No, we actually talked about this topic extensively in our group, and this was similar to housing affordability, something that was ultimately decided lived in city leadership. But the impacts of climate change, that one being one that I think was particular, I mean flooding, increased flooding risk, those were things that we really advocated to be highlighted within the emergency preparedness section. But ultimately, it was determined that while these are driven by climate, there's, there's climate aspects to, to the increased risk. It didn't land in that objective, but that was an active, active conversation we had that I think ultimately, I think it's a little, it's not as, I think, as direct as, as some of the wording that we had come up with previously, but the emergency preparedness section where that determined.
Okay, so quick follow-up. So would, would the suggestion be that we as council consider including that, but in a different section than environment, which was the section you were working on? So it was something that came up in your conversations. Is something? that came up in your conversations, is something that belongs in the strategic plan, but wasn't in that section?
Yeah, correct. This was one of those, as she alluded to, there was topics that didn't, don't fit into nice boxes, and so this was one of them. So it was something that we felt was important, and I think the way you worded it was perfect, that we thought it was an important topic. I think other board or other task force members would agree, but it wasn't within environment necessarily that that determined it the best.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. First, a question for you, Dale. Just so I can kind of get the pieces straight, we're going through a comprehensive plan process for 2024 through 2044, and that process has been going on since June. How does the strategic plan fit into that? Does it drive that process at all, or is it a company on a parallel path? Can you give a little clarification?
I think we've all had the incredible opportunity to see Stephen Padua's visual around where ideally the strategic plan would fit. There are smiles, because I think you've probably seen it many times. I wish I had it on my slides tonight. There's sort of, yes, the funnel, as Councilmember Hall just, for those not seeing on the screen, did with his hands.
I thought he was doing the YMCA thing, sorry.
Yes, it could also be that. Ideally, I mean, I think we know the comprehensive plan is called the comprehensive plan for a reason. It is the plan that guides all of our planning. In the way that we currently have our plan structured, we have this, you know, 20-plus year document, and then we have a number of functional plans throughout the city. Some of them, I would say, I would say on average are seven to, again, 20 years in their scope. The strategic plan is really intended to be both a document that has ambitions and provides a North Star, but that really focuses our work on the next five years. So in some ways, I would say you've got functional plans feeding into the strategic plan, which then below that hopefully feeds into some of our shorter-term plans, our funding plans. But again, then we have our CIP that sits at a slightly, kind of almost alongside that. It is not a neat nesting doll. I think that is a challenge, and we put that challenge to this group, Councilmember Joe, to really try to scope actions that were more near-term, more actions we expect that could be achieved in the next five years, knowing that that was one of the, I don't want to call it a challenge or a flaw, but one of the characteristics of the original plan is that we had some really long-term, really big actions that were not necessarily achievable in five years, and some that were very direct and achievable. So that's, without being able to have Stephen's visual, that's sort of the way that we've been functioning as a task force.
No, thank you. That helps to say it's not a nesting doll that fits anywhere. I think it's probably the most pertinent way to think about it. My next question concerns the proposed updates to growth and development, particularly the balance of jobs and housing. So number two on page 15 of your presentation, land plans are updated regularly, implemented effectively with regular monitoring, community input, and forward-looking adjustments. Two, improve livability and the balance of jobs and housing. And so my question here goes back to the balance of jobs and housing. Some communities like to have one job for every house, so that people are going to be able to stay in the community and live in the community. Was there any discussion of what the balance that we should be driving toward? Was there any conversation in this committee about, a task force, about what that balance might be ideally?
There was, and I actually think probably members of two different groups may have thoughts to share on that. So I know Social and Economic Vitality also discussed that, and I would invite Growth and Development back up as well.
At least in our group, there wasn't discussion of absolute balance, I think, and Victor may hit on this as well. I think it was encouraging more crossover, like more people that are working in Isquah, being able to live in Isquah was really more of where our conversation was focused, but we didn't, we weren't making statements about the relative balance between jobs and housing in our group. I think there were some comments around ensuring that housing doesn't take over all other uses, that there's, there isn't like an imbalance in housing driving out other types of uses, but that wasn't an extensive conversation.
Okay, thank you. Victor, how about your perspective?
Yes, I remember that at the very beginning of our discussion, we were figuring out what the right separation of focus should be between our two goal areas. And the way that Chris and I discussed it was, you have two parts of this puzzle. You have the affordability of the housing, and then the ability of the people to actually afford the housing. So we ended up saying that Social and Economic Vitality should focus on how can people afford housing and how to bring that affordability up from the perspective of their income, and how to increase better wage jobs within the city. And the other goal area focused on increasing the stock of affordable housing within the city, so that both of them meet halfway and increase the ability for people to both live and work in Isqyah, right? And I believe that's where we landed on that.
Great, thank you very much. Just as Victor was giving his answer, I was, it struck me that the challenges and questions that this task force has been struggling through are the same questions that those of us on council, those of us on nonprofit boards are struggling with as well. And I really appreciate all the hard work that you have given to our city as a volunteer, giving your perspectives. It's very important that we continue to engage the community, and we hope that you'll be leaders in that engagement as we go forward. So thank you, Dale, for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Okay, looking to council members, any other questions? No? Okay, I think we will go to public comment, and then we can get to council feedback. So trying to see if there is anyone online or in person who would like to make public comment. They are online, on the phone, they can press star three. If on a computer or smartphone, you can raise your hand icon or send the host a chat message. Anybody indicating a desire to speak?
Council President, none of our virtual attendees have indicated a desire to speak.
Okay, fantastic. Who wants to start this fun process of feedback? Okay, Councilmember Mertz got there first. There we go.
Thank you, Council President. So just a couple of thoughts, as somebody who was actually council president the last time we did this, a very different process. You know, I just want to thank the members of the Strategic Plan Update Task Force and just say, you know, I wish, you know, I wish that we could do, you know, a reality TV show, and instead of Dancing with the Stars, we call it Planning with the Stars, because you all really did an amazing job. And I compare it to juries. I was on a felony case in Seattle, and it sort of restored my faith in my fellow community members, because they did such a great job adjudicating a difficult case, and you all did an amazing job here, too. The last time we did this, it was a, there were a lot of fits and bumps and starts and elbows and whatnot, and I just think you all were just amazingly thoughtful and respectful to each other, despite having differing points to make at different times and being very passionate about this process. I also want to thank Dale, like everybody else who's thanking Dale. You know, the last time we did this, we paid a professional facilitator, whose job it was to herd cats, who did that for a living. I think we paid them a lot of money, and, you know, we have this homegrown talent in our own administration able to do this, and we didn't have to look to go bring a professional facilitator to assuage egos and whatnot. So, you know, I don't have much else to say, because I was involved in the development of this, so I support it very much. I'm eager to see how this process continues through the next couple of quarters. You know, this is a recommendation. I'm sure the administration will have some thoughts about some of the things that we came up with, and I'm eager to hear about some of that, but it has been, you know, I liked the, what was it, Cherie, what do we call it, was the process that we had, the five-year, Charette. You know, I liked the Charette, but I think this as a modification of an existing plan worked really well, and I just wish more members of the public got to see the hard work that you all did. Thank you.
And before we go on, Dale, could you just move the slide to just direction needed? Just want to give you an opportunity. You're good on all of that?
Of course, I was part of the group, so I better be.
Okay, just making sure. Okay, I think I'll just go down the line, yeah.
Well, I too had the privilege of getting to work in this group, which was a great group. I also support the recommended updates. I will say, it seems like in the discussion and in the presentations, there was at least one and maybe a couple items that didn't fit neatly into a bucket, and so I think council should consider those and consider how we make sure that we do follow up on making progress on those items, whether they're worked into the plan in a different way, or whether they go into a different functional plan, or however that may work out. But generally, I do support the recommendation of the task force and really enjoyed participating as well. Specifically, I thought when the themes came out, they were really right on with the kinds of themes that I think we needed to make sure we addressed in this five-year update. So specifically, public safety, that was something that came to the forefront, especially in 2020 and 2021, when I was council president, and we were really needing to make sure that we were addressing that in a strategic way. And I think that the task force did a great job of making sure that that was addressed in this update. Additionally, adding more emphasis on climate, as we've seen hotter summers and smokier summers, this is definitely something that we're working through with emergency planning, and I appreciated the update there to make sure that we're addressing climate mitigation and climate, and climate action in this update as well. And then also the overlay of equity, that over the last five years, as a city, we've embarked on trying to make sure that we are addressing equity in all of our policies, and so I appreciated having that lens represented as we worked through this update. Infrastructure, I was on the original, I was on, I was part of the original group that developed this plan, and infrastructure was considered last, last time around. It was something that our facilitator said, you know, absolutely, we need to include this, but it really didn't come about from our community conversations during that first go-around, so I really appreciated the additional focus and the community input on infrastructure. And I think we have a much stronger infrastructure section, which is really important. When that fails, then it becomes very, very important. And so I think, I think that was also very well done, and I really appreciate the extra time that was spent on that. And on housing, I appreciate the tweaks to the wording. I think as policy changes over time, wording does matter, and if we're using wording that is othering to any of our community members, I really appreciate making sure that we're updating the wording so that we are, we are not unintentionally, unintentionally othering Lastly, on transportation, which I, you know, I think as a mom of kids on bikes, this has been something that I've been really appreciative of, the multimodal focus, but specifically saying, like, let's make sure that we're addressing safety. I think that is, that is really necessary, and really something that is increasingly on the minds of our community members as well. So those were some specific things. Overall, I just really think that this was a very thoughtful update, very, very well-done process by Dale Markey-Crim, and I just want to thank the task force for representing the diversity of opinions and perspectives that are in our community.
Thank you. I think first I want to thank the mayor for convening the task force. I want to thank everyone who participated in the process, too. I was able, and of course, our staff who supported the work, Dale, of course, but I know from watching the first couple meetings, there were quite a few staff that came to talk about all the different functional plans that we have. So thanks to you for spending your evenings with this group as well. Like I said, I was able to watch the first two meetings, then the final meeting, and the amount of work that happened in between is exceptional, like crazy, actually. So I'm really impressed with the process where we've ended up. I love to see the alignment with our planning documents, to see that our objectives and potential actions have been updated. It's clear there's a lot of area of emphasis for us to focus on and kind of renew our focus on over the next five years. Special call out to the mobility update. I might have that framed. I love that update. The only thing that stands out to me as potentially missing in the strategic plan that I want to highlight is how recreation programming and community building and creating spaces for social connection fit into our five-year strategic vision. I know we're interested in having a conversation eventually about how our recreation programming is meeting the evolving needs of our community, but I'm also reminded of U.S. Surgeon General's warning around loneliness and isolation, an epidemic of loneliness and isolation is how he referred to it, and how social connection is shaped at the individual level, right, the neighborhood level, the community level, the society level. So we do have a role in this, and so I don't know if it needs to happen necessarily with this, but I do think it's important that at some point we incorporate our role into the strategic plan, and maybe it is something we need to think about with more intention and more community input down the line. But anyways, I just wanted to emphasize that as a priority, something that might be missing, but also a great opportunity, something into our five-year vision. But just to be clear again, fantastic work done here, and I think that the next steps make sense to me, staff review, board and commission, additional public input, and back to council. Thanks again.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. Some great comments from my fellow council members. I think just a couple of thoughts. One, I appreciate the forward-looking nature of infrastructure. We never have ribbon cuttings for new sidewalks or getting graffiti off of bridges, but it's an important aspect in order to keep our infrastructure up today. I think TJ pointed out that when you buy something, you also have to think about the upkeep that's going to be needed there to keep it operational, and having that vision in mind by this task force shows its forward vision as you were going forward. Also, on the subject of housing, under the growth and development topic, I appreciated the forward-looking in the sense that you, in number one, talked about responsibly accommodating additional housing and services throughout the city as we're going forward. You had the foresight, I think, if I'm reading it right, to think about those people that aren't here yet but may want to move here, and how are we going to accommodate them so that we can still keep our unique charm, our neighborhoods, but still have additional housing and infill that's going to increase our densities in thoughtful ways? And I thought that was also very forward-looking, and I appreciated that. One small point of just acquibble would be, under the housing, I can't place it right now, but the affordable housing, AMI under 30%, zero to 30% AMI on page 19, explore and invest in housing for individuals and families with the greatest need. Obviously, I think our housing advocates in our staff know that we don't necessarily buy that housing ourselves, but we work with RCH and other nonprofits to get that housing put in if we can, and we can find properties that work. So just a clarification on that point, just to indicate that it's more of a collaboration and not necessarily direct city investment on housing, and that's really the only small point that I could find after I looked at this for an hour and a half. So thank you for, again, for everyone that worked on this and all of your hard work. Thank you.
Deputy Council President?
Whoops, thank you so much. Yes, just really excellent, excellent work. I have some thoughts about some of the points in the plan, but there's others, for the sake of time, I'm not going to talk about everything like I would like to. So I, first of all, I was really impressed with the detailed list of actions around housing, and I won't go over each of those in detail, but when I was reading it and looking at all of the things that have been added, I just thought it reflected how important housing and affordable housing is becoming. It's been coming for a long time, we've been hearing it for a long time, but obviously now it's reflected in our strategic plan. And really more of a comment for my fellow council members, again, when we go through the budget process, maybe we need to look at what are, what resources are we putting toward being proactive in achieving these strategic goals, because we want to see them actually come to fruition, and it's really important for our community that they come to fruition. I was really thrilled to see that. I was really thrilled to see that the idea of operationalizing equity, just a week and a half ago, I sat in on a all-day conference on the east side, addressing this very issue. How do we take what we've done in equity now and make it, you know, even deeper and more meaningful in our organizations? And again, we are one of the leaders. We are in many ways far, far ahead of our fellow cities, but there's still so much work to do. So I'm really pleased that that was included in the strategic plan. Human services, I can't thank you enough. So five years ago, I was a citizen, making comments about the strategic plan, and one of the areas where I was really concerned was human services, was there enough? And, and now there is enough. Human services is really reflected. Especially want to commend you with the idea of convening our social services in every half year, every six months or so, and listening to them in order to learn how we can help our social service providers, our nonprofits thrive similarly to the way that we support our for-profit businesses, and how can we help them become economically viable and vital just the way we work with our for-profits? I did wonder, when I was reading that section, if we wanted to broaden the definition. It says, "social services providers." We also have people that provide what I would call community resilience services that aren't exactly direct service providers. And for the wording on broadening that, I would recommend that we talk to our human services director, our manager, Monica Negrillo, because I think perhaps we should include in that beyond social service providers, those groups that really work on providing resilience so that people don't fall into the social service network. So that's just, again, I, I trust the task force to discuss that thoroughly and come up with a good, a good resolution. Transportation, I absolutely applaud the commitment to Vision Zero, which seeks, which is a program, if people don't know, that seeks to reduce pedestrian deaths. And Bellevue, City of Bellevue adopted this a number of years ago and has made some progress on it. This last year, Washington State had the highest number of pedestrian deaths in its history. This is absolutely a vital thing for us to take on, and again, demonstrates the forward-looking approach that this task force took. And finally, two things, real very quickly. I absolutely applaud the support from the community court. Again, a very important part of our human services provision, but also our justice system. If there's one thing that's missing, and it is referred to in, in the word cultural, but there is no exact plan for arts, and so I would just bring that up as something that, again, I'm sure the task force can chew on that and decide whether it belongs or doesn't belong in the strategic plan. But all of this is, it's all good, as Martha Stewart likes to say, it's all good. Really excellent work. And I just applaud what, what you've done and the hard work and the good thinking that went into this. Really wonderful. So thank you so much. Really pleased with the product that we have in front of us today.
Okay, I will end us off with feedback. Plus one to a lot of what I've heard, participated in the group, I came away every meeting mentally exhausted, because there was so much deep, heavy, quick work that was going. So really, really impressed with that. Love seeing the updates and how this progresses us forward as a community. It's very reflective of, you know, the changes that we've seen in the last five years and looking forward to the changes that we want to see in the next five years. Thinking on kind of the plan and process, proposed path forward, as you say, for this, I particularly, when we're looking at staff feedback, I want to make sure that we are really only including actions that we really feel like we can commit to in the next five years. I want to be able to, at the end of this five-year period, put checkmarks on a lot of those things. And toward that idea, I really want to make sure that the actions are very specific rather than aspirational. One of the issues that I had with the previous plan was there were some things in there that you just couldn't say whether you had achieved it or not. And so I would like just a little bit of staff feedback on those areas, which I think is perfect for a staff scenario. And then finally, there were a few, just very few actions that I think I heard for the first time with the task force that didn't previously come from a plan or a board discussion. And so in those cases, I really want to make sure that that goes back to the applicable board and make sure that that's really, or staff member involved, to make sure that that really is reflective and that we're not adding something that hasn't had that thorough feedback. Finally, the question for you, Dale, is this proposed path doesn't have council approving this until Q4. We're going into a budget period for a two-year budget, which will cover two-fifths of this strategic plan period. How are we reflecting the actions and the needs that the strategic plan represents when we haven't necessarily approved it yet?
Yep. I mean, we're going to be working in tandem on the two. One is not going to necessarily get ahead of the other, but they're going to sit side by side through the end of this year. So I, I would be surprised, I would be unsurprised, I guess I should say, if we don't come back to you with something prior to that late Q4. The idea is that would just be the very latest time that we would come back.
And I, I think, as we think about it as council and looking at that budget, you know, this is great feedback, but there's very little of it that is a surprise. So I would expect the administration to have already started working those into the budget period. But I am looking forward to, as we review that budget, understanding, are we accomplishing two-fifths of what is in the strategic plan update as we approve this budget? Because we all know that actions don't get accomplished without money. So with that, any other feedback? Does the administration have what they need to take this to the next steps?
I do.
Okay. I just want to say another really big thank you to all of those involved in this, the staff, our fearless leader who really did do an amazing job on this, and all of our community members, both those in person here and those who worked on it. I think you guys, I see some snacks and stuff out there. You guys are going to go out and you get to party while we get to continue our meeting here. I'm thinking, council members, maybe we take a five-minute break just to have a little bit of transition time? Okay, fantastic. So we will take a five-minute break. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we are back at this point and going into our second item, which is COM 0055, Facilities and Revenue Options, presented by Autumn Monahan, Administrative Services Director, and Andrea Snyder, Interim CFO. Take it away, folks.
Thank you, City Council. Again, my name's Autumn Monahan. I'm the Administrative Services Director. I'm here with a whole lot of friends tonight, including Andrea Snyder, our Deputy City Administrator and Interim CFO. I also have representatives here from fire, police, court, facilities, and our architects from TCA. So they're all here and available to answer any questions as we go. So quickly, purpose of tonight's meeting is to provide a follow-up information for previous presentations and tours. We've been working on space planning now for over six years. Our latest effort started about two years ago, and then just in April, administration proposed a phased approach to an Old Town campus. We've had several meetings since then, as well as a couple tours, one of existing facilities, and then last night, of some newer facilities. And we have heard a lot of your questions and answered all of them via staff reports. So tonight, really, the purpose of this meeting is to receive your feedback and review next steps. So the direction needed is, should administration focus further research on a phased approach to an Old Town municipal campus? Does the council agree with administration's proposal to use current resources for leasing office and court space? And should the administration proceed with planning for a ballot measure for a public safe, public safety facilities bond vote? And start creating a community engagement plan for review? Again, all these questions are just a, really, we're just looking for a direction on whether to move forward with further research and efforts toward this plan. So we're not asking for any major decision tonight, but more, are we really on the right Really briefly, the proposal again is to demolish City All South, which is this building, and utilize this property for building ENU Fire Station 71. We would then move city hall offices, as well as council chambers and the court to lease space. We've identified an opportunity with the King County District Court to lease space there for court, and we're still researching options for city hall and council chambers. And then remodeling the current city hall, once we move folks out exclusively for police use, and having a long-term goal of still having ENU City Hall. If council is supportive of the plan of moving Fire Station 71 to this location, administration recommends keeping the property of the existing station, which could be used for building a new city hall someday. So we recommend retaining that property for future use. Just a reminder on our project goals, ensuring safety, responsibly stewarding public dollars, providing accessible, equitable, and exceptional customer service, supporting economic development, delivering enhanced community amenities, and embodying environmental stewardship. And in the staff report, we have broken down each of these facilities that we've talked about in this phased approach and how they meet some of these goals. And next, I'll turn it over to Andrea.
Thank you, Autumn. Good evening, council. I'm Andrea Snyder, Deputy City Administrator and Interim CFO. You have seen a couple of these slides before. This is just a reminder what we estimate the cost to be for construction of Fire Station 71, $32 million. Lease renovations to the existing building, $15 million, for a total of $47 million. Also, with this proposal, leasing costs of about $4 million for tenant improvements, and then $1 million in rent, and that would cover city hall and court. These are rough order of magnitude estimates. We would need to refine these numbers as we move forward and finalize the design for Fire Station 71, for example, and other, other costs, but that's our, our estimates How we propose to fund these expenses would be that we would finance the police renovations and the fire station through voter-approved debt, specifically what we've proposed as a bond, and we've discussed that in previous meetings. The levy rate, based on these estimates, would increase from its current 74 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. $1,000 of assessed value to $0.92 per $1,000 of assessed value. This, as a reminder, keeps us in middle-to-low range of our peers of surrounding cities in terms of assessed property tax. Also is a chart here showing the annual debt service for Fire Station 71 and IPD. If we were to finance those projects, it would be about $3 million a year, which would equate to about $206 for the average annual household and home, that average annual household impact. That average home value is about $1.1 million in Issaquah. We had a question from one of the council members about what if we were to include a new City Hall construction. We heard last time from council that a long-term plan for City Hall was what you would really hope to hear today. As Autumn said, we could construct. We're also still looking for properties to purchase in the interim. And if we were to construct a new City Hall, the estimate that we have for that is between $45 to $49 million. So what that would mean if we were to bond for that or ask for funding from voters for that at the same time that we ask for funding for Fire Station 71 and IPD renovations, that would be about doubling what you see here on this chart. So it would be about $410 per year for that average annual household impact if we were to try to do it all at once. Also, as part of our funding proposal, as a reminder, for those leased property expenses, we do have existing funds on hand that we would use for those leases. That's approximately $10 to $15 million from the anticipated sale of City Hall Northwest, as well as government mitigation funds that we have on hand. Given our estimates for one-time costs, these existing funds are anticipated to cover the lease costs for the next five to eight years. And I'll turn it back over to Autumn.
So I'll show you a timeline here in a moment of some suggested next steps, but public engagement was also an area that council asked staff to come and discuss a bit more. So some ideas include putting together a community task force that could provide some feedback on an engagement plan, hiring a consultant to help us with that plan, as well as a community survey ahead of going to voters, and ensuring that we include Old Town residents, human service providers, businesses, and artists, specifically in the Old Town area, just because of all the proposals here in this location. So as far as timing and next steps, depending on your direction and your feedback, draft schedule could include more discussion at the City Council retreat on July 27th. In the fall, developing that engagement plan, putting together the task force, and continuing our research and further scoping costs for a phased approach to an Old Town campus. And then next year, finalizing the lease and moving Issaquah Municipal Court to King County's facility, continuing to research options for lease space for City Hall and for council chambers. Based on community feedback, begin design of Fire Station 71 and police improvements to better understand the costs, and then a City Council decision on placing a measure on the ballot. And with that, we're here to answer any questions.
Okay. So I know we have lots of conversation and feedback that will come, but starting out, do we have any questions on these areas that we want to start with? Councilmember Marts?
Thanks. I had at staff, I had some concerns about how this particular parcel would work for a fire station and, you know, the maneuvering of the rigs. I haven't seen any information since I asked those questions.
In the staff report, there's an attachment that shows some of the turning radius for apparatus. So that's the first start, but we also have TCA here available, too.
Are there any, like, visuals or visual aids or things you can point to?
Yeah, let me. There was an attachment in our packet.
Great. So can you present that?
I'll let you start talking while I look. Okay. Sounds good. Yeah, we took a look at the turning radius, and so you'll see the one main or the bay we just drew in. When it brings up, we drew in kind of the worst-case scenario for one of the largest trucks that we would expect. The bays are universal-size bays, so kind of sized for growth or possibility, since this is kind of a schematic plan. And so we took kind of the largest turning radius and placed it on the plan to see how that, to show you how that would impact the site.
Do we have anything to present here, or should I take another question in the meantime?
Yes. Okay. So you can see the dash lines of the turning radius.
And so let me ask, if I may, a couple of questions about this. So what are you using as the baseline for the interior dimensions to fit a ladder truck?
So the big bay is, I believe, 75 feet deep. So there's nine feet required, so City of Issaquah standards is bi-fold folding doors, which takes about nine feet. So you need four feet plus a five-foot to walk around the rig, as well as five feet at the back. And so it's about 60 feet for that rig, is what we're showing here.
And how does that compare to the bay that's not big enough, 72 currently, to house a rig?
That I am not sure. I'd have to get back to you on that question.
Yeah, so the current ladder that we have there, it's 58 feet long, and it doesn't meet that current surround standard, like Sarah just mentioned, of having that five feet on the front side and the back side. Fortunately, the council members that were able to do the walkthrough, you know, when we have the doors closed, you're able to see the tight circulation, and the intent on having that space is so we could rapidly get folks around it. So that apparatus was designed to fit within that bay, so that's why it's short within that length. So having that 75 feet does allow us flexibility for growth for the apparatus as well.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions, Councilmember Marts?
No.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Hunt.
A quick follow-up on that same topic. So when we were on the tour yesterday, it sounded like the recommendation would be it would allow more room if we had not the bi-fold doors, but rather the, you know, sort of garage doors that roll up. Was I mistaken? And if so, would that, could we factor that into the design plan? It would buy us some additional feet that we wouldn't need to have the folding doors?
Yes. So there's a couple, there's a couple decisions on those doors, on whether you go bi-fold or roll up. I believe the bi-fold open faster, so there's that consideration. There, I believe they are, take less maintenance, as overhead doors often require quite a bit of maintenance. They get, I believe they get hit more often, the overhead doors. So because the speed, you can see them open completely, so they get hit a little bit less. They are, as you, they're more expensive, so there is cost factor, so the doors themselves are more expensive, and you include the area for footage. So there's basically, we're seeing three kind of door scenarios. There's high-speed coiling doors as an option, those you see often in car dealerships, so they roll up really quickly. We see the bi-fold and just a regular overhead door. They all have three different kind of price points for those and different kind of functioning.
Fortunately, the City of Issaquah is supported in the other two stations, those bi-fold doors, as Sarah did describe. The visible opening and closing of those doors allows our operators, our drivers, to maintain line of sight. There are safety measures for roll-up doors. They are lower cost, and our maintenance folks have to spend a tremendous amount of time. When we do a time study, when I assisted with another fire station, those bi-fold doors, because of how they function, they're able to open in about 14 seconds versus 45 to 60 seconds for a roll-up door, depending on the height that it has to try to open to clear. And turnout times are important.
As you're hearing and as we stated earlier tonight, there's a lot more that goes into design of a fire station. These aren't the final designs. What the Administration is hoping to hear from council this evening is whether we proceed with a plan to build a fire station, use, and then we would, of course, finish up design. We've only really done fit tests at this point. There's a lot more that we need to determine that would go into a new fire station. Thank you.
Okay. Just to, just to clarify, though, on the tour yesterday, one of the big things that was mentioned was that the space for vehicles, that's one of the limiting factors for the whole, the whole fire station. And so it really is important to make sure that we can fit those vehicles and we can fit them cost-effectively. So that would be, it would be good to have all of those cost options with, with the added space as well that's necessary for the different door options.
And I'll just add to that to clarify. I think one of the things that we heard during the tour was that we realized after building that station that we didn't necessarily need the bi-fold doors on the back on the entry point, and so I'm not sure if that is included in this idea as well. Deputy Council President DeMichele.
Just to add to what Councilmember Hunt was saying, at what point does the council talk about all the things? We know what the, what EFR would like in it, and we understand the need very much. The tour was very, very helpful. But at what point do we talk about what the council would like to have in this fire station? And I'm thinking particularly about, do we, do we want community rooms? Do we want places where the community can meet? Is this the appropriate place, or do we want those kinds of things somewhere else, or do we not want them at all? I don't know that we've had that conversation in depth, and there might be other amenities that we think, well, we would really like to have that, or we don't want to have that. You know, it's still, it's still difficult to make a decision going forward when not really clear exactly what this is going to provide for the community, so.
And we're looking for council direction tonight on whether to proceed with some of that further work. So that includes community engagement, to see what the community would like and would prefer in a fire station, as well as the improvements to police. And then we'll be coming back to council with some of that input for further discussion as we're refining design options and costs.
Okay. So finalizing any questions remaining from the council. I know we've seen this many times, so we're probably more eager about the feedback portion. I will see if we've got anybody online for public comment. We do not have anyone in the room or remaining for public comment. So if anybody's online, star three on the phone, or on a smartphone, or desktop, you can use the raise hand icon. Do we have anyone indicating a desire to speak?
No, Council President. No one has indicated a desire to speak.
Okay. Well, you can always email us. Okay. This is a big conversation and a lot of discussion points. So Deputy Council President and I kind of pulled together some of the things that we've heard from council members, individual conversations, or most importantly, on the dais at other meetings. And we kind of felt like there were three core themes of having a conversation around this, which was kind of the locations, maybe fourth theme, City Hall, planning, deferred maintenance, and bond or paying for it. So I'm wondering if everybody would feel comfortable, starting on kind of the location conversations. How do we feel about the proposed EFR site? Do, what do we think about the proposal to move court? How do we feel about City Hall, moving to a rental? Do we feel like there needs to be a consolidated campus? Anybody have any large feelings on all of this? Councilmember Marts?
I do. I don't think it will come as a surprise. I'm not sold on relocating the current station. I'm not sold, I'm very much not sold on the new location being an improvement. I'm not sold on leasing an administrative facility. I'm not sold on leasing court facilities. I believe that none of this, more important than any doubts I may have on those four individual items, I'm not interested in solving any of those problems before we have a plan for what to do about a City Hall. I hear that we could potentially put a City Hall where the current fire station is located. We need to have that conversation. I'm not willing to spend eight to 10 years of throwing money into a pit to lease facilities someplace else. That's not being a good financial steward to the people of Issaquah. We need to have these conversations. I'm just not willing to have, I'm not willing to support anything like that until we know what we're going to do about a City Hall. The only piece of it that I think qualifies as, and so urgent to preempt that conversation is improvements to the IPD's facility, securing the facility and making that facility competitive with other police departments in the area so that we can keep the IPD folks that we have. That's the only bit of it that I'm willing to potentially support ahead of figuring out what we do about a City Hall. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to add in here, I did receive an email from Councilmember Ray, who kind of responded to some of these things. So if everybody's okay, I'll just throw in. He had said, "Fire Station 71 was not intended to fill the role that it is currently in. It has been retrofitted to make it work, but is clearly suboptimal and not meeting the needs of EFR firefighters. A new station has been contemplated for some time. I support building a new fire station, as I do not think further remodeling of the current station will get us to where we need to be. Not 100% sold on the location. I know there are limited places we could put the station, but we need to be a bit more creative. Are there city-owned parcels that we have not looked at?" He did say he was comfortable with the court, a purpose-built, built-to-purpose court such as King County District Court would be greatly preferable to the current setup. Question of location and proximity to the jail is a question for the municipal court and police department to address. And then regarding City Hall, didn't feel like it was important to have a consolidated campus or to choose a target location now, and is comfortable with renting, but that we should have a target end in mind. Might be an end that is several years out, and it might have some variability, but we should have a planning target. So just trying to incorporate his voice into the conversation since he took the time to make comments over email. I will take any other comments. Deputy Council President DeMichele.
Okay. Thanks. Well, first of all, I really want to say that I have no doubt that we need to do something, for sure. The tour of the fire station just demonstrated to me totally that that is not an adequate space. In fact, that's, yeah, I will watch my language. So that is just not a place where I want to house our firefighters. And it has many, you know, response problems with it as well. However, that, that said, and also the police department, I agree with Councilmember Marts, we've got to do something there, too. So there's no doubt, we have to do something. But I agree with Councilmember Marts that we have got to have a picture of the big plan, and I don't feel like we've got that yet. I, I feel like if we move forward with some narrow decisions, that we're going to foreclose some other decisions that need to be made later. And also, I think our community deserves to know exactly where we're going, and the county, the council and the community need to weigh in on what do we need from this. So I am in agreement that we've got to have a bigger vision here. We've got to have a plan for all of the needs that we have, including some that I will talk about under deferred maintenance. So, you know, we got here because people deferred doing something for So, you know, we got here because people deferred doing something for a long time. That fire station, something should have been done 15 years ago. I mean, that is just indescribably bad. And so, but we're stuck here. And I think we can't rush into decisions because we know that it is urgent, because we've got to make good decisions that are going to last for a long time into the future. And I don't think we're there yet.
Okay, Councilmember Hall?
Chair, we're talking location first, is that right? Well, first and foremost, I completely agree about police station. I think the argument has been made incredibly compelling. For the most part, we're probably all in the exact same boat about that. Same with the fire station. I actually, Deputy Council President, I think that was an interesting point because my read is, we're reading the same things, but I'm actually getting a completely different sentence in the two of them. My read of the phased approach is that it allows opportunities to continue to be there. Doors don't close, that we don't rush decisions. So I guess here's what I'm thinking. We could start with fire station. So first of all, we asked staff to look into what it would take to renovate the current site. Seems clear to me that it would be too costly and too inconvenient to convert this into a temporary station with apparatus parked outside. Don't want to do that. I think it's important for us to ask questions and ensure we're making the right decisions, but we also need to rely on the experience of fire service professionals. Right? And the professionals, their conclusion based on their experience, based on the availability of land and cost of land, based on arguably urgent needs from what we saw, they think that this site checks all the boxes. So I am interested in kind of what you were saying earlier about what are the opportunities for kind of public community space in there? But my sense is this would be too small of a space for something like that, but perhaps that's information that could be helpful to us at some point. With regard to court space, I do think that leasing space from King County District Court is good move for our court services. It seems to have the space that we need, that we lack. It has the safety and security for staff and users that we lack. And it seems at the point of co-locating court services, city court services and county court services is both efficient and user-friendly to anyone that lives here in Issaquah or comes to Issaquah for court services. So I also think that that makes sense as well. The other location. And then City Hall, that's right. Oh, this gets back to the phased approach point. So when it comes to general gov and where they should sit, the proposal, this phased approach proposal starts with that five to eight-year window, right? Of leased space where we continue to monitor the market for potential purchase and renovation opportunities, right? And have conversations about whether to bond and build new. So I guess like the court space, my concern there would be long-term sustainability of funding paths, but it does give us time to consider, gives us time to engage more with the community, and it allows us to respond to that urgent public safety need now, while we also still have kind of a ramp to continue to make a decision about City Hall and what we want to do there. So I think, I think we're agreeing on a lot of things and then kind of departing on kind of the phased approach, whether that's good or bad, right? Whether we want to have a full plan now or whether the phased approach actually helps us get to that full plan, are my thoughts are.
Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. Autumn, if we were to just hypothetically expand the police station to, police facility to the entire City Hall facility, we would still need to move the administration somewhere else and we'd be leasing at the $1 million a year or $800,000 a year rate. So we'd be committed to that for the five to seven years until we found something else, even if we were just to expand the police footage, right?
That's correct. I believe you were the one that had the analogy of kind of that puzzle game and all the pieces, right? So yes, if, you know, there's a priority of enhancing the current facility just for police use, we have to find a space for City Hall to go, as well as, yeah, just for City Hall.
Okay. So I think I'm more in agreement with Councilmember Hall that our police professionals have told us that they need more space to be competitive, they need more space to properly catalog and keep evidence and to keep victims safe during interviews and to have the community space to do the classes for regional police services. And so I am sold on the need to have City Hall expanded and give that fully over to the police, as was kind of the initial thought and plan when we first built that back in 1998 or 99, that as Issaquah got built out and the Highlands came in, we would use that solely for police because it was anticipated that that would be the space that we would probably need. So in that sense, we're fulfilling part of a plan that was started when the Highlands was started and Talis was started. So we're not starting from zero, but we are starting from a deficit, certainly agree with that. But then the question becomes, the fire proposal, and I do agree with Councilmember Hall that the professionals have told us that this site could work. It wouldn't be ideal and perfect, but it can serve the needs of our community and give the facility that our Eastside Fire and Rescue firefighters need and will help them fulfill their mission in a way that I think our citizens would like to see when they think of our fire service in town. And give the police the facility they need when they think of, you know, what does public safety really mean for me? What does a reasonable response time mean for me, et cetera, et cetera, along the way? So I'm of the opinion that we should go forward with the phased approach for Old Town. The fire station should be in this spot unless we find a better or more feasible spot. It works, it's not perfect, as I said, but I think we need to go ahead and do that. I agree that the police need to have their facility, so we're talking about a bond for public safety for those two along the way and moving the administration to a place where we can still conduct our business and do the things that we need to do for municipal services. I am encouraged that after COVID, we have more of a rent-a-desk capability, if you will. You call in and you say, "I'd really like to have a desk," and you reserve it for yourself. And it has cut down on the space that we need for all of our employees and makes more efficient use of the space that we have. So I hope that the administration will continue to find ways to consolidate the space, make better use of it along the way. We're making better use of the conference rooms that we have because we can reserve them and have better planning along the way. So perhaps we're going to be able to keep the cost down for the administration and maybe we almost go down to a mini City Hall concept a little bit, a little bit like Bellevue's doing with some of their mini city halls in town. It still has, you know, the services that you need. It's a smaller facility, but it enables us to still have that touch point for engagement with the city staff, but at the same time is, you know, more reasonable in the sense of the new reality that we're in, that we're in in terms of COVID. So that's where I'm sitting right now. I know it's kind of going for the whole ball of wax, but I think if we're going to do this and really commit to police, we have to really commit to fire as well and go out for the bond. So that's where I stand right now.
Anyone else, or shall I go?
I'll be, I'll be brief. I think that the next phase for any of this is getting some community feedback, community survey. I am concerned about the high cost associated with, I understand that the fire station across the street is out of date and is no longer serving our purposes in a number of ways. However, it is moving it across the street essentially, and so I am concerned about the public's perception of that. It's essentially in the same place, but making a new building. And so I think that getting community feedback, community feedback on that would be important. I am concerned about the cost associated with all of these things. I think the community feedback piece will be, will be really important. And I also would like to explore things like, you know, the sort of smaller City Hall or, you know, reflecting that a lot of people are able to work online and remote and how do we make sure that we're addressing that a lot of our audience as the city council is virtual now, et cetera? And a lot of people should be able to do a lot of their City Hall tasks virtually. So I think, I think some creativity and cost savings there would be, would be good and would also help demonstrate to the community that we're really looking to make sure that we're doing this as cost-effective as possible.
Okay, so I'll throw my ideas in there. Regarding need and locations, for need, as I've said multiple times before, I think we have very clearly demonstrated the need for both Eastside Fire and Rescue and the Issaquah Police Department. It is rather shameful that we have let it get to this point, and I think these needs are extreme, and if the community could see that. Gosh, okay. I think the concern about putting Eastside Fire and Rescue directly across the street on an area that already has existing problems with traffic is harder to swallow, but given that professionals have talked to us about call-response times and desired locations as we grow, I have to trust that. I have to trust the administration and architects that have looked at the site and said the parcel fits. So I think we have cleared that hurdle for me. Similar with court, I think particularly seeing the King County Court over there and recognizing, oh my gosh, how dire the need is here compared to the services provided there, I think that's a no-brainer for us. Where I get into concerns is the idea of doing all of this without a clear idea and a plan for City Hall. I hear Councilmember Hall what you said about there being open paths by taking a little bit of time. If we do find a place to purchase and renovate, that could save us a lot of money. It could be an ideal situation. Where I get concerned about closing doors is a decision to put EFR here and then not having this as an option for a City Hall idea. And so I, that's why I want to make sure if we're, that we have a clear understanding of what our best options are for City Hall. And I think there's a lot of question marks, and there's a lot of good ideas that have been shared here about the idea that we're doing a lot more remote. We could do a small City Hall idea. We do have land that would be available across the street, so it's not like everything is closed off. I just, it's a very difficult concept for me to move out general government and not have that forward-thinking plan. I think as a city organization, we have demonstrated with, you know, building a building that was supposed to be for IPD and staying in it oh so long. We've got Eastside Fire and Rescue where that building is way over use and maintenance. We have a clear history of letting things go on too long and not making those decisions on them. And so that, for me, is the biggest red flag about going into a situation and renting with a City Hall and not having a long-term financing plan, location plan, and just decision-making idea on that. I see a huge potential there of us just going into that and continuing to have to spend money on that or not be able to afford a future idea. So I have clear concerns on that. That being said, agree with the idea of giving IPD that space. I think I'm there on EFR and this space. I'm there on court. Most of my concerns come around City Hall. So, location, second time around. Deputy Council President and then Councilmember Mars?
Okay, three observations from our tours. The first one was just going around the Redmond Government Campus and seeing how lovely that is, how it fits in so nicely into that community. Granted, they are a much bigger city than we are, they have a lot more money than we do. They also had a giant piece of land and we don't have that. But again, that is just a lovely, lovely downtown campus and gee, that's what I'd love to see us have. And, and that requires some planning. The second observation was our tour of the police station, which was just wonderful. Our police escort repeated over and over again, "Well, not perfect, but you know, it's what we'll do, we'll do with, it's what we'll..." And I just thought, I don't want us to be saying that 10 years from now. I don't want our police and our fire to be saying, "Well, you know, it's not perfect, but we'll make do." That's just not the outcome that I want from this process. I want something that we're all saying, "Wow, this is, this is great." Not that we're building a Taj Mahal or anything like that, but that we are really looking at how people use the facility and it will be used in a way that is really accommodating to do the purposes that we want. Finally, a suggestion, and that is, and this has to do really with not only our thinking, but our community engagement process. What if we were to work up like two or three scenarios out of this process? Instead of, this is the plan with a capital T and a capital P, but here are some possibilities. You know, what would it look like if we had a mini City Hall? What would it look like if we had a large City Hall, you know, and no parking? What if we put this facility somewhere else? You know, let's just try and think about, how could we take the elements that we have and the needs that we have and mix and match and see what kind of scenarios we could come up with? And those, that's the kind of thing that we can also, when we're doing community engagement, instead of saying, "Here's the plan to the community and do you like it or don't you like it? But here's some possibilities. Which of these scenarios do you like the best?" So just a thought that maybe that would help us open up our thinking a little bit.
Councilmember Mars?
Thank you, Council President. You know, I, I think we've already closed some doors. I think the decision to sell City Hall Northwest, a 24th, you know, a parcel that had a 24,000 square foot building on it, we can, we can all say that we didn't love that building, but it was, was a parcel that once you sell it, our problem of not having enough real estate doesn't get any better. And so I think that this idea that we can wait, we all see the incredible ballooning costs. I have no confidence that trying to build a City Hall in eight or 10 years is, is going to be any more financially achievable than it is today. In fact, I rather suspect it'll be more difficult. So this, to me, continues to point to needing to come up with a comprehensive solution. You know, we should trust the public, to engage the public on this. I think we're just afraid of a, of a bigger tab, but if we tell the public, "Look, this is what we're doing and we're going to get a great police station and we're going to get a great fire station." Maybe it's adding property to the existing location and the city expanding the parcel where the station is currently located to do remodeling in place. I don't know. I don't know what the solution is, but you know, we have a lot of land. When this... When this conversation about, "Oh, we don't have any land." We do, but we have, whether we've said it or not, taken certain things off the table, right? We have a commons adjacent to this facility that is large and I believe there was a time when there was a plan to have a city hall directly north of where the community center is currently. Now, it may well be that if we talk to the public, they say, "No, we'd rather, we'd rather take a little bit higher taxes or, or property tax to keep that commons green." Maybe they say that, maybe they don't. Maybe they say, "Use, use some of that land to build a city hall there." But I have faith that if we talk to the community and we say, "This is what we need going forward for a city, for a city hall, for our police, for our fire." I have confidence that if we come to the public with a strong argument, well thought out, that they will respond well to it, rather than pushing the problem down a number of years, which just feels wrong. Thank you.
Okay, so it seems like we've gotten some feedback on locations. I'm not sure there was much agreement on any of that. So I'm wondering if there are any, maybe I will ask the administration to summarize what you have heard or maybe I take it back to, does anybody want to really get into this? Because I don't want to leave this and not really have some resolution or, not decision-making, but clear feedback. Go ahead, Councilmember Hunt.
So on location, it seems like there, there were multiple opinions, but it seems like there were, I think a majority of us that were concerned about the lack of specificity of location or options for location for city hall. And so I, I think that might be a direction as long as we can make sure that, that I'm correct in summarizing that, but that did seem like one of the things that we, multiple of us had some concern about.
Let me also see if I can add to that because I think that's a good, good sense of what we heard. Court, do we have any sense of agreement that the King County location is the right way to go there? I think I heard at least three. Anybody have any problems with that? Councilmember Marz.
Oh yeah. Yeah, I mean, this, this facility is not a great facility. It's outlived its usefulness as a court facility, but if you say, "Is it a crisis?" No, it's not a crisis. I also don't believe I've seen a clear, the clear economics of moving to the, to the King County facility and exactly how it looks in terms of what we save, in terms of, you know, what it costs us versus what we save in efficiencies, those kinds of things. I would want to know that kind of information, but I also lump it into this category of not wanting to, if it's not a crisis. And the only part of it that appears to me, and, and look, I, I want a new fire station. We should build a new fire station, but what's in crisis right now is just the IPD's facility. And so until we address the city hall piece, I'm not willing to address anything that's not a crisis. This building is not a crisis. They could keep using this facility. It's not great, but it's worked for the 15 years that I've been on council and it'll keep working if it has to. The crisis is with the IPD. Thanks.
I have some thoughts on that. I think we took tours of other facilities that were not perfect. They were not state of the art, they were not Taj Mahals, but they were so clearly useful and maintained. And I think we as a city really need to pull up our bootstraps and recognize that we are not a town of 10,000 people that should be having our employees work in a situation like this. This is embarrassing. This is a incredibly, incredibly difficult way to try and recruit and retain employees. And I don't ever want our situation to get to the point where we're only addressing crises. We have a responsibility to our residents and our employees and our taxpayers to maintain what we have, to create a good working environment and not to get so behind that we are creating a situation that we can call this not a crisis. So I, I'm sorry, I feel very strongly about how we should be maintaining our buildings, but I will take a step back on that, not let myself get up on the high horse. What, what I think I heard then is, do we have agreement of the sense that there are still concerns about city hall and long-term location? Is that feedback we feel we can give to the administration? Any problems with that?
First, the other part, I agree with the comments you just made. The other part of that too is, and we've heard this from staff, we've talked about up here in the diocese, that everything costs more tomorrow than it does today, or next year than it does today. So the decision to be investing in a new fire station now rather than a few years from now seems prudent, seems like. So that's kind of the other side of that argument in terms of support for moving a far, building a new fire station. I mean, I guess what you just summarized would capture what seems like the majority. I don't feel that. I feel like the administration has carefully structured next steps for us to be able to have, to set up the city hall conversation, to go to a task force and say there are opportunities. Former Station 71 is a good candidate. The space in between that Councilmember Marz was just talking about over here is, is a potential candidate and have that conversation with the community. And while at the same time, again, looking at the market for opportunities that come up. I understand the nature of your concern too. I just think I'm not as concerned. Leasing makes a lot, makes logical sense, step while we continue to have... So maybe, I mean, that could be the majority, but wanted to make sure to say.
Yeah, and I think what you say does align with what we heard from Councilmember Ray. So there's a little bit of mixed opinions, but maybe one thing that would help assuage and kind of answer some of the concerns is to lay out some of the options that we could do for a city hall idea as far as a location and give us some sense of some of those concepts that have been or would be considered.
Okay, so it's a focus on location for city hall, not on the, any funding mechanism?
We haven't gotten to the funding one. Yep, yep. Okay. So the, the next idea that we kind of brought up was this concept of deferred maintenance and there's a lot there, including what I was just saying about all of the deferred maintenance. Let's see. I said in my email, "How do we factor into the facilities conversation the backlog of maintenance needs on city-owned properties used by us or leased by others, including nonprofits or for-profits?" Deputy Counsel President.
Thank you. So yes, this has been something, and I think you've heard me say it, you know, many times, that is really, really concerning to me. So I did send everybody a link to the facilities condition assessment that we received in November and just, just, I'm going to just capture the first few pages of it, but the total assessment on 27 buildings that we own was that we have about 23,000, wow, I wish, $23,400,000 in deferred maintenance on those projects. So I sat today and did my calculations and of course, you know, the caveat is, there are my calculations and I just rounded up to just a general number, but if I take out the big ticket items like city hall and, and all the other things that we're looking at, it still comes down to $15,800,000 of deferred maintenance on, on, I would say, 22 of our buildings. And of the 27 buildings that were rated by that study, 16 were rated as poor and one of them was poor with red marking on it and that was our Public Works Administration Building. And six were rated fair. So out of 27 buildings that were rated, 22 of them are in jeopardy. And the, every year that we defer the maintenance on those, they get worse and worse and worse. And so in addition to the things that we've been talking about, we are looking at a multimillion dollar scenario where we have to decide what we're going to do with these buildings. It may be that we decide to sell them and maybe that we decide that these are worth saving and these are not, but whatever it is, right now, we don't have a plan going forward. And I, I don't mean to preempt the administration. You may have comments on, on, you know, maybe we are looking at what we're going to do with those buildings, but I want to get it on the table for three reasons because we are, we're discussing what we're going to put on the bond or what we might end up putting on a bond. And so I want to make sure that the public understands that we've got some very large expenses in front of us first. Secondly, I want to raise the question of, are there other facilities in our portfolio that we could also place on a bond? Maybe they would fit in with a public safety, maybe they would fit in with just a general maintenance or repair. The school district has done remodeling bonds in the past, but at least be thinking about, and the reason I'm asking it now is because the public does not like to have any government organization come back and back and back and back. So we don't want to have this bond and then this bond later for this and this bond later for that and so forth. So, or at least that's not an ideal situation. So that's the reason I'm trying to raise it now. If any of those buildings needed to go on a bond so that we could repair them or replace them or whatever, now is the time for us to be thinking about that. And again, with the scenarios that I was talking about before, are there scenarios where we would want to add those in or not? So I think this is very much the theme that we've talked about tonight and that is that a lot of maintenance issues have been deferred and not even addressed for, for decades. And when we have buildings that are rated poor or only fair out of our whole portfolio, we have that many that are in poor condition, that just speaks to the fact that we, again, we have a major outlay of funds that we need to address. So thanks to the administration and to Council President Walsh for helping me get this on the agenda and maybe that you will say, "Well, this isn't something that we want to address right now," but I just think it needs to be in the mix because it's just part of a pattern that's occurred where we are not maintaining the buildings that we own. So, there we go.
I will just lay out what I heard from Councilmember Ray. He said deferred maintenance is never a good thing. We should address it as soon as possible. As longer we wait, the more costly it will become. We must do deferred maintenance on the facilities we use, but we need to get out of the landlord business. I would support a program to catch up on deferred maintenance on our leased out properties to get them ready for sale. Councilmember Marz.
I have been asking for 14 years for that conversation. We never do it. We should have a conversation about, I, I don't, I don't respectfully, I don't completely agree with Chris. He wouldn't be shocked to hear that. It's not that we need to get out of the landlord business, but we should decide which amongst, I mean, I look at this list and there's a lot of things on there that I didn't even know we owned. And we should decide what things we want to own and what things we don't want to own. And I've been asking for that conversation for 14 years. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Hunt?
So the last question was about location and I said, you know, when we go to the community, we will be asking about potentially moving the fire station across the street. I do think that it will be very important therefore to make the, to explain because they, the community will not have the opportunity like we had to tour the fire station and to understand what would be possible with the new fire station, the capacity, the response times. So I think it will, I think that deferred maintenance will have to be the benefits of a new fire station. I think that will have to be explained in a way that really makes those benefits clear because they won't have the same experience that we've had where we've all been talking about it as though it's sort of obvious to us, but that's because we've actually seen the facilities. And so I think for location, it won't be, I think, clear because it's essentially the same location that we're talking about to the community about what the benefit is, but for the deferred maintenance and for the improvements to the facility, especially for the fire station, I think if that's communicated, that could be the benefit.
Councilmember Hall?
Thanks. Well, I heard a bunch of kind of areas of focus, I think, in what you said. First, I just want to affirm that you're right that, you know, facilities maintenance is really important. It's gone, you know, we've, we've focused on other areas of prioritization as a city as, instead of this, but it does need to become a priority moving forward. I agree with you on that too. Seems to me that it would be a kind of significant conversation as we have the capital, as we update the capital improvement program too, and that's kind of part of the process, but, but then there's this more structure around a conversation that we need to have around going over each of the properties and saying, "Is there really value in the public? Is there public good in holding this or not?" And then the other thing that was brought up too was around whether or not there are potentially some other facilities or collection of facilities that we own that could potentially be placed on a bond as well. I think my initial reaction would be the public safety kind of frame around a bond is compelling to voters and we've demonstrated the need there. I think potentially community engagement could help us guide. There are other priorities that we want to add to that and then we'll just have to make a decision around the end of that cost, the impact to people at the end of that because I think it was like 200 something dollars for just the new fire station and the police station improvements, right? And then if we added a new city hall, it was like around double for individual impact, which is not an amount. So all good points that you brought up and I'm glad that we're having the conversation. And I just hope that we have kind of the venue to have that conversation more structured, close budget or somehow part of budget. I just don't know when it fits in, but I just wanted to affirm to you that I think that's a good conversation to have.
Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. I would just plus one, some of Councilmember Hall's comments that if we are going to go out for a bond, we need to keep it as clean as possible and as clear as possible that it's public safety focused unless we have a compelling reason to add other things. The challenge that we have is if we put too many items on there and make it a Christmas tree, it's more susceptible to arguments against from different angles. If it is just public safety, then we are clear in the mission, we're clear in what we want to achieve and we can show the result to the community once it's done. And so I would, I would urge my colleagues to try to keep the bond to just public safety. We do need to address the deferred maintenance certainly, but I, I think that's a separate conversation from the, the bond discussion that we're having for facilities tonight. I would agree however that we do need to assess our properties that we own and why we own them and what the mission is there and is it still something that the community buys into as something important to support? And, and do we need a building to support that mission or can that mission still be achieved without a building itself and just community support through meeting spaces or rooms or what have you along the way? So that's, it's kind of a separate conversation, but I, I can't disagree that it is an important topic to discuss and we've been neglecting it for, for far too long.
So I'll throw in there, I think the facilities condition assessment actually gave me a little bit of hope, which is kind of a weird thing to say in seeing so much deferred maintenance, but clearly seeing that the buildings that were better taken care of are the ones that we use for the most part. There's certain things like the fire station across that have much more deferred maintenance, but I think one of the things that it really indicated to me was, we probably have a lot of property...
of properties there that we're not taking care of, and we have deferred maintenance, and we should probably consider selling. So from my perspective, I think some of that gave me a sense of, hey, there's a real conversation here about evaluating whether we should come up to speed on the deferred maintenance, or whether it is just more in our taxpayer and financial interest to decide to sell those properties. So I think that's where I land on that. Anybody?
I just really quickly wanted to echo. I think that's a really good distinction, because there's the conversation about whether or not to sell, but then there's the policy conversation about like whether we're intentionally deferring maintenance, because it's not really something we, but we think it's important to hold on to the asset long-term. So I just think that was a really clever way to think, you know.
Yep, go ahead.
Just one more thing. Well, I, I agree. I mean, going back and looking at the study, just the fact that we have it, and we've got that data, and we can look at it and say, oh, look, this, this building's going to cost, we can start looking at the cost, what do you call it, the cost-benefit ratio for each building. Is it worth keeping? Is it, you know, can it, can it be repurposed for something else? I mean, there are several facilities questions that we could be asking. I guess what I'd be asking is that we decide, if we're not having it under this conversation with the bond, are we going to work it into our budget process? Are we going to work it into our CIP process? You know, let's not let these facilities sit for another five years while we're deciding which direction we're going to go on them. Because some of them, basically, some of them we're going to lose just because the maintenance is being deferred and nothing is happening to improve them. So, so that would be my request, is let's decide how we're going to go forward on this, which is the path that we want to, or maybe there's multiple paths. Maybe it will come down to a building-by-building process, but something really needs to move on these. Thanks.
So I think we've heard that there's a lot of interest in better understanding what our facility uses, whether we have long-term plans for them, what the plan is for maintenance, and what the plan is for incorporating them maybe into a CIP. So maybe a memo, maybe a response now?
Sure. So we've definitely started that with the Capital Improvement Plan, and have identified needs for HVAC and flooring and roofs replacements. And so you'll see some of that already in the CIP, and we're triaging, right? This is not all going to happen overnight. And so we're looking at some of the more urgent items, including improvements to public works, energy efficiency projects as well. So there's, there is plans in place to start some of that work on the capital side that's separate from these projects. I did also want to mention, there is a lot of deferred maintenance for this building and for City Hall that we need to factor in. So, for example, in the next five years, we'd have to put in at least $400,000 of improvements in this building to keep it just kind of status quo. And then same for City Hall, it has, it needs a midlife renovation, no matter what the use is. And so whether or not that becomes fully for police, it still needs the seismic upgrades, and it still needs a midlife renovation. So we, we'll still be facing a lot of these costs for these buildings, too.
The other thing that I heard is, we have a lot of properties. Do we have a sense of when we're going to do an evaluation and how we might go about that?
Yes. So, and, and a lot of the items that you'll see in our CIP are for the buildings that are of highest use, not so much our rental properties. There is a proposal that the city take on Gibson Hall, and that will be included in our budget planning. And so we're starting with a few of those facilities and seeing how that process goes. We also are looking at recommending surplus of some much smaller properties that, you know, we may not necessarily need. And so we're starting that process, but we can have a more structured plan for council in the future to look at a lot of those other properties, so.
I, I think I've definitely heard there is a desire to maybe not do one-offs, but to really have an evaluation and understand what our needs are, what our plans, et cetera. Okay. Last portion, how are we gonna pay for it? Always the funnest portion of everything. So I think I said, how do we balance asking for funding of immediate needs such as public safety, which would require potentially multiple voter asks for our other needs as they come up, against a larger single request for funding? How do we factor in tax fatigue and the fact that there's going to be multiple agencies asking for funding to voters? How do we address all of our competing needs? And then finally, how do we consider the public process? So anybody want to start when it comes to funding? Deputy Council President?
Just a quick comment. So the comment was being about the Christmas tree approach. If you go back and look at the school district bonds, the Christmas tree ones, the largest bonds they went out for got the highest voter approval. And that's because everybody gets something. And so I, that may not work for us. We're not a school district. You know, they have a built-in support mechanism that we may not have. But at least, I, I totally agree with Councilmember Marks. Let's not be afraid to take this out and ask the community, and that's what a community advisory group does. They vet those kinds of proposals. They look at how much they think the community will tolerate. But let's not, you know, I, let's not underestimate our community and its commitment. We know we have strong commitment in this community to public safety, to fire and rescue. And so they may very well say, you know, how much can we give them, not how much money can we save? So, so the Christmas tree approach is not necessarily the wrong approach. Thanks.
Councilmember Marks?
General funding, it's almost always a bad idea to lease a car. It's almost always a bad idea to lease an apartment versus investing and getting equity in the things that we're investing in. So in general, I am much more in favor of making investments versus paying rent to somebody else. So that's my fundamental position on how we fund these things, is, is build equity in the, in the things that we're spending money on, rather than just somebody else.
Can I push and try and see if I get some clarity on that? So does that suggest that you're more interested in getting funding for more than just public safety in an ask now?
Yes, that's, that's, yeah, forgive me. Yes, that was my, that was my point an hour ago, which is, yes, we should talk to the public about what we need to spend money on and tell them. I mean, if the public tells us to go lease, okay, but let's ask the public. I think the public's going to come back. The public understands it's best not to lease cars. The public understands it's, it's best to own your home versus renting an apartment. I think if we say, here are the options in front of us, do you want to spend a little bit more and have us own a City Hall, or do you want us to kick the problem down a decade? I trust the public to come back and tell us what they, the best way to use our money.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Yep?
Oh, yeah, me? Okay. Here at the head. I do think, yeah, I think it's time to put something on the ballot, or it's time to have that conversation. Community, it makes sense to include new fire station on that. It makes sense to include police station improvements on that. It makes sense to ask the question, as Councilmember Marks was just saying, about whether we go big and include a consolidated City Hall campus, centralization of services in this area, that question about, or that, that point about getting, getting more out of a facility that we own and building equity over time. But that's a question that I go back and forth on, whether or not to include City Hall in that this time. I think the police and fire address immediate needs. I think no matter what, we'll have to lease general government space for at least a little bit. I don't see how we could give that building to lease, go out, the bond, to build a new City Hall. I just don't see how that would be finished at the same time. So we would probably need to lease space for at least a little bit, though, but at least we'd have some certainty. There's, like, public safety, I guess what I'm trying to say is the public safety part has some urgent need to it. There's certainly an argument to be made that a consolidated City Hall is timely and in the community's long-term best interest. But I go back and forth on whether that's a good idea, because again, that's also a lot of money. You'll pay a lot of taxes right now in King County, I know. Always the thought of another county ballot measure coming down. I think the argument, though, of, and like, here's why I keep calling back and forth, because the Christmas tree thing is a, is a good point. It has worked. I was on the bond advisory committee for the school district this last bond that they're making. And that was, data on that was presented to us, where they would go out on smaller bonds, and then they would come back and triple it, and it would pass. We'd be like, what? It, it is, I mean, they're also, you know, maintaining their rate and making adjustments, so it's not like a sizable difference like a city would, so something to be mindful. But I do think that it's time to start planning for that public engagement in going to a ballot measure with new buyer, with police station improvements, and then asking the question about city.
Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. When we started the conversation, I thought I was the outlier on the top, asking for the bond and the fire station and the full enchilada, so to speak. But hearing my colleagues over here, it, it sounds like they're willing to do the full enchilada potentially and ask the question whether or not additional pieces can be put in there. And if that's the case, and we're thinking about really having a comprehensive plan to take care of this, I can, I can support going out and asking that question. If it comes back that, you know, the support is not as strong for items that are not public safety, I think we need to just hone it down and keep to the basics and the fundamentals. But I'm happy to ask that question. If we do decide to go big, big, you know, because that's what the committee and the outreach tells us, that, you know, I'm happy to go that direction. So I hope, I don't mean any harm on the Christmas tree comment. I, I just want us to succeed in the public safety realm first and not necessarily get detracted or distracted. Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt? Thank you. Well, I, I agree with a lot of what I've heard. One additional thing that I think it would be good to get community feedback on is that if we had a bond that moved, that relocated the fire station over this building, this building becomes renovated, that building then is an empty fire station. It's an empty fire station right next to our police station, and it's an empty fire station right on our main busy street. It puts us in a strange position, because I don't think, it wouldn't be, wouldn't be obvious to me anyway what public benefit that would serve once it no longer is a fire station. So I do think having, having an option where we include making that a City Hall, I, you know, I think, I think building in that, because that would be an additional cost. We would need to do something with that building. I think that would be worth putting the pros and cons to the community, to explain that to them and, and see what they think about it. Because I think that seems like one potential option for the City Hall in the future, and the alternative right now would be that we would have a, a empty fire station right next to our police station and right on Sunset.
Okay. Let me add in what I heard from Councilmember Ray. He said, I am not opposed to asking the voters for additional funding. As for managing the competing priorities, that's the purpose of the CIP and the biennial budget. Historically, we've received good input from the public on how to fund initiatives, and I think we continue to leverage this process. In addition to looking for new funding sources, I believe we should raise capital by selling city properties that we are not using. So that seems to echo a lot of what has been said. Did you want to add something?
Yeah. I just want to read a, reiterate one of the things I said earlier, which is, I think a lot of the benefits of both the internal renovations, like allowing the, the police station to be the entire building, and then also moving, relocating the fire station. I think a lot of those benefits are in the data, in terms of the response time, and in terms of the, you know, additional capacity for, for the police station. But I, I think that will all need to be explained in terms of providing that data, you know, so that the community, when they're doing these surveys, so they can understand the cost-benefit analysis, because that will all be kind of behind the, the building facade for the community. They won't, they, they don't know the current storage conditions in the police station, for example. We've, we've had tours, but they have not. So I think that's also important.
Okay. I haven't said anything, so I'll go first, and then you can, we can do a second. My count, yeah, it's on. Let's see, how do I start all of this? I, I think if we focus entirely on public safety, we are not ignoring or, but putting aside the fact that to do so, we're kicking general government out. And so it really is a, that need comes about because of this situation. So I, I think there is a true connection there. There is a true sense of need, because we need that space. And we are not in a situation, nor would we want to put our taxpayers in a situation to continue to pay lease long-term. Additionally, I think it is a terrible idea to go out to the voters multiple, multiple times. And we've already talked in our capital task planning, or capital planning task force, whatever it was, about a park district and the needs for the pool and things like that. We also haven't looked at some of our general operations costs and things that we could do there. So I think we're in a worse situation if we try and go out for just public safety without really recognizing the need of general government at this time, both because asking taxpayers for money on ballots two times in a row, or very soon after, seems like we're doing a his poor job. It seems like we don't know what we're doing, and it seems like it's nickel and diming. It also just doesn't reflect the fact that we are literally kicking general government out to accomplish this. And to do so without having a plan is a bad financial situation and a bad planning situation. second comment? Go ahead.
I, I think somewhere in our packet, this was put forward as a, one of the questions. And I did just want to bring, recently went to lunch with one of our neighboring council members, and that particular municipality lost a bond mentor not too long ago. And so I said, what, you know, what would you have done differently? And she said, we did not hire our consultant early enough. So I'll just throw that out there, that maybe in our planning here, we should be starting to think about, about that. And we've talked about the fact that maybe that needs to be part of our budget discussions for '25, is how much are we going to decide for, for a consultant? And that is not a consultant for a yes-bye campaign. That's a consultant for the public engagement part of it, which also includes an informational campaign, which is, so it's, we're not talking about putting together anything that violates PDC rules or anything like that. So, oh, the other comment I have is, we're going to learn a lot from the election on November 5th about the support in our area, because that school bond will be on that ballot. So, oh, the other comment I have is, we're going to learn a lot from the election on November 5th about the support in our area because that school bond will be on that ballot. So I think that's going to be something that we're going to want to really watch, analyze, and figure out where the pockets of support were and were not, and particularly in the precincts that are in the city of Issaquah. So I am hoping that we won't be making, that we'll be timing this in such a way that we can use the feedback from that election to feed into our final decision about how much we're going to include and all of that. But again, that is a conversation that the community needs to hold and bring us, you know, some recommendation. So those are my two comments.
A little bit of summary, I think I heard more support for the idea of including general government than maybe we've discussed in the past in the bond and kind of planning at this point. I also heard a lot of conversation about talking to the public and utilizing a process both in surveying and a community task force and a consultant and just generally making the ask. Also, some sense of, hey, there are probably options out there rather than the plan. Does anybody have anything to add to that? Okay. Does that give the feedback on funding and locations and kind of everything that you need at this point?
I think it does. We have some time currently allotted on the 27th, so we would like to take that time and come back with some feedback from this discussion, if that's all right.
Great.
Great. Thank you. And thank you, Autumn. Thank you, Andrea.
Yes. So next step is good to the order, so I will bring, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to mention, this weekend, former Algonquin Mayor Dave Hill died. He had been, he was just a titan of the local scene. He was on the PSRC Executive Committee for nine years, RTC for 10 years, RPC for seven years, and just one of the nicest people to ever grace local government. So I just wanted to send my condolences to the people of Algonquin, and our political sphere is a little poorer for Dave's passing.
Okay. Councilmember Hall?
Just really quickly, I think council should echo what the city administrator just said. Autumn, and Jeannie, and Andrea, and everyone who've been working and breathing facilities for the last couple of years, thank you for all your work. Thank you for your patience with us as we have these very challenging conversations as well. And we appreciate you.
Plus one to that, always kind of appreciate expressing appreciation. I've got a few things on good to the order. National Night Out is coming up in August. I want to make sure it's on everybody's calendars. And really interested to see, obviously, there's going to be a booth for council at the main location, but seeing if anybody is really interested in attending a different location, if there's a preference for all of council that can be there to be at one location, get in touch. Let me know if you have a strong preference, one way or the other. We've got the Summer Employee Recognition Event on Thursday, July 25th, from 11:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. If you are interested in attending, they are requesting an RSVP. There should be an email in your inbox on that. As the city administrator said, July 27th, we have our retreat. We will be sending stuff out ahead of that, but one of the big topics will obviously be the facilities and bond and how to pay for it and what the next steps are. So we look forward to continuing that conversation there. And then if everybody will not run off, I need to try on our new jacket. We have logo wear for council members. Want feedback on a few things and then get a sense if anybody wants to order anything. Not that you want to wear a jacket in July, but that is when we have it available. So I believe that is the end of our agenda, so we will be adjourned at 9:45 p.m. Thank you.